All right, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the special commission meeting for Monday, June 23rd, 2025. If I can please have the city clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Present.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Here.
Commissioner Howington?
Here.
Commissioner Lully?
Here.
Commissioner Santiago?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Present.
Mayor Vila?
Here. All right, at this time, if I can please have Commissioner Howington lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions and deletions.
I have one, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I also have one.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Yes, thank you. So, I just wanna make sure that this meeting that we're having today, as it goes forward, that we all have a little bit of respect towards each other up here on the dais. We don't always vote the same way that you vote, but I think that we owe each other a respect of how we choose to vote. That's how we feel, that's how we feel is the right way to go, and to be attacked here at the dais because we choose not to vote with how other people here up at the dais votes, I think is unprofessional. So I'm just requesting that we respect each other's votes, as I respect everybody else's. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Santiago?
Yes, I would like to do a deletion on the agenda with the overwhelming positive community support for Doc. I move to delete 5A.
There's a motion to delete section 5A?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, by Vice Mayor Harriet? Please do a verbal vote.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
No.
Commissioner Caldwell?
No.
Commissioner Howington?
No.
Commissioner Lully?
No.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Yes.
Mayor Vila? Yes. The deletion fails. All right, let's go ahead and move to section 5A. If I can please have the city attorney read the section.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is section 5A, a request for a vote of no confidence for the city manager. This item was requested at the regular city commission meeting held on June 16th, 2025.
Okay, does anybody on the dais wanna start? Commissioner Caldwell, you actually did the motion, so.
Yeah, for me, the lack of information that I get to be able to perform my duties as a city commissioner is just getting out there. I'm requesting stuff that are coming up on budgeted items through public records request, and I'm getting denials, no information available, no records exist. These are simple requests of where the money is going. There seems to be a lot of money being hidden in the budget for projects that we're not being, we're not able to vote on. I'm gonna use example of the Golden Book. I think it's a great idea, beautiful idea. How are you gonna implement the policies and procedures to enforce it now? This should've been a topic of conversation. The city manager, the deputy city manager, and our finance director was out of town several weeks ago for three days. There was no notice sent to any commissioner that I know of, unless anybody else heard anything, that the office would be vacated for those three days, and the succession of who's in charge was not listed. Again, I feel like we're not certain commissioners up here are not getting the same information other commissioners are getting. I feel like the money's being hidden, and I'm asking questions and I'm not getting results.
Commissioner Howington, and then Commissioner Lully.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna keep this short. A city manager's role is to implement policy, not to create it, obstruct it, or reprimand the commission for doing its job. I have submitted a formal evaluation detailing serious concerns that I have, including poor communication and repeated oversteps of authority. When a manager cannot perform their duties or respect the boundaries of their role, confidence in their leadership is no longer justified. A vote of no confidence is both appropriate and necessary. It took me almost six months to get the financial details. I was told I couldn't have it because the name of the accounting software was protected. Then it became the ERP or data within the line item detail was not able to be shared. I even asked for read-only access, couldn't even get that, and when I asked you specifically if you were going to withhold the data, you never responded to me. From May 22nd until I received the actual information, the only person I heard from was Robin and Jonathan. Those are concerns, and to go back to Halifax crossings, the commission voted to table to a date certain upon the completion of litigation. And you said that while you understood it was the intent of the commission, we couldn't be date certain because we didn't list a specific date. So then we were forced to hear a quasi-judicial hearing based on the applicant's request, which apparently superseded the commission's will to table said item until the completion of litigation. So for those reasons, I will be voting for the no confidence.
Commissioner Lully, then Commissioner Vila Vasquez, if you please hold your votes until after we hear public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to ask you just for a little latitude here as I go through this. This is a very, when this first came up a week ago, I didn't, I didn't understand really the gravity of it, and a week of thinking, and even on the way here, you know, thinking I might, you know, vote a certain way, and really trying to go over what the best step is for this commission and this body, who has seen seven, seven city managers in recent years, which certainly is not tenable, and I think does contribute to the overall issues that we might see in this city. As I really pondered more the gravity of this situation, you know, I was, and some of this I'm hearing for the first time, I didn't know what, you know, the issues that Commissioner Caldwell has faced, and I appreciate him sharing those, and I've gained a tremendous amount of respect for him, serving within the last seven months or so, and I think he's a terrific commissioner. I think actually everyone up here, even though we disagree, I think has something to offer this city. I've known a little bit more about Commissioner Howington's because I've seen it a little bit more public, and I think she and Commissioner Caldwell maybe have a different approach, a different style, and so I've seen, you know, television comments, I've seen comments on social media, and I absolutely 100% respect her for that, and respect everyone's approach to doing this job. Again, as I've thought, even literally in the breaks between our workshops and now, it's really difficult, but I'd like to sort of, and I'm not a sports person, but so hopefully this metaphor's right, am I throwing an audible, is that a word? I'm wondering if this body would entertain something that I think accomplishes what you're asking for, but is not quite as severe, and I'll go into that, and by the way, I respect the way everyone wants to vote on this, and I respect everyone's opinion. I, I've been thinking about this, and I'm wondering if this would be an opportunity for us to have a commission work session, not up here like this, where, where it's in this really formal setting, where we'd have an opportunity to go through the performance reviews that we've, that we've just, I believe, and maybe I'll hear from folks, that I know I've conducted and that I've submitted, and that I don't believe have been processed yet, where we'd be able to go through that, have a discussion about these issues in a less formal setting, where we can really, you know, for lack of a better term, hash this out. I have, I have experienced frustrations over the last seven months, so I understand where everyone is coming from. Maybe other people have not experienced frustrations, and that's okay too. We all have our different perceptions and the way that we operate here, but I would like to ask the body if the body would be willing to go through this commission work session off-site, fully open to, you know, it's by law, as sunshine requires, have these discussions, work through these discussions, and, and proceed from there. And the reason why I say that is because, and we'll have an opportunity, when I've, when I've looked into this, sometimes a request like this is the next step for termination or a separation, and if that's what, what the body desires, then that's, again, that's the body's, that's, that's your right. But if that's not your intention, I think that there is a better way to go through this and actually get something out of it versus restarting us from scratch. And again, in respect of every single person up here's experience, and I believe you, and, and I'll leave it there, but I just wanted to kind of open, you know, my dialogue with that, put that out there for the body, and see if that was, if you were looking for a solution, that might be a way to move forward without hitting the reset button. So I'll leave it there for now as something for this body to ponder, and I would be curious to everyone's thoughts. This is just something that I, again, up until five minutes ago, was thinking about and wanted to offer the body. Thank you.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if anybody gets a chance later on when it's made public, my evaluation of the commissioner, of the city manager, I'm sorry, you know, I gave him credit where credit is due. My comments, my negative comments, my low ratings were on his interaction with myself as a commissioner. Everything else, he got graded, and he deserved what I gave him, which was a good rating. And I know that there's a lot of people here that I've never seen before here to support him. I receive a lot of emails from people, I receive a lot of phone calls, and I have a lot of respect for all of you who reach out to me, but I also want you to understand that I was elected by the residents of my district to stick up for them and to do what's best for them. So it has nothing to do with him being a good city manager with his staff, or being out there doing what he was hired to do with the city. To me personally, is the lack of communication with me, the lack of sharing information with me. I can tell you, one of my biggest issues was when I came to City Hall to see him, and I was told he's not around, and nobody can tell me where he was, only to find out that, as it was stated before, out in a training session, I had no idea who was running our That was the biggest mistake ever made. You do not leave a city without letting the commissioners know who is running the city. We have Glenn, who has ran the city, and for those of you who don't know, Chief Schneider runs the city when this city is in a state of an emergency. So Chief Schneider should've been the other person assigned, and as I went for more information, I found that it was an assistant of a director of another department who was running our city, who I never met. I have no idea who that person is. It took me a while to make this decision, because this is not new for me, it's going back, but when this happened, that broke the camel's back. I understand, when you tell me I'm going away, you can reach me by phone, but if we have an emergency, who signs those forms? An assistant to a director that we don't even know? I was in conversation with a person at one of the fire department's events. Halfway through the conversation, I find out this person is our new HR director. At one time, when the city hired new directors for departments, they were brought here and officially, professionally introduced to us commissioners. This doesn't happen anymore. Recently, I sent out an email asking our administrators, who is Webster? Because I read this email where the person identified themselves as being responsible for a department, or to communicate with whoever sent out these emails for that department. I had no idea who Webster, other than Barnaby, but then I find out that he's an assistant to a director in one of our departments. So this is where I find disrespect, for at least myself as a commissioner. I am not speaking on behalf of other commissioners, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Doc was hired to run the city, but he does not own the city. I, again, we're here, and I have to disagree with Commissioner Howington. So I have the old policies, before, again, they were revised without even bringing them to the commission for approval, the operating guidelines for effective commission operations. You know what's on the first, number one? The city commission is responsible for setting the policies. That's the first number one. This is what we have been, at least for the past 25 years that we've been living here, this is what the city's been running on. Then there is another email, I know I spoke with the attorneys on this, but I just can't find where we can come to a meeting, to an agreement. This goes back to November 2020. It was a request, approval of resolution number 2020-71 to adopt a temporary personnel policy and procedures manual. It was submitted by former city manager John Peters. Motion by Commissioner Ramos II, but Vice Mayor Bradford, to approve resolution number 2020-71 to adopt a temporary personnel policy and procedure manual as presented and authorized the acting city manager to sign any documents in the same verbiage that we do. But that approval was to bring policies, policies from the staff to the commission to look at, because out of a former city commission, a city manager, he understood our policy for the employees, that it should come to commission for approval. Never seen them. This was on limbo because of the changes, unfortunately, but this was never approved. It's still out there to come to us, once those policies have been updated. It has never come back to us. The procedures for the commission, for me, to do my job, was updated by my staff. So I'm being told by my staff, how do I need to do my job up here on the dais, before it was came, brought to us for approval. So again, I am not questioning his job as a city manager. I am not here to say that he's doing a bad job out there in public or with his directors. I can never tell you, because I would not authorize to ask directors how they feel about their city manager. So far, I've gotten no complaints. My complaint, and my issue, is as a city, as a commissioner, I feel that I am not taken into consideration to share. As the last meeting, right here in pure presence of everyone, they spoke about somebody here, staff being in conversation with restaurants, these huge restaurants, the mayor brought it up, the vice mayor approved, you know, approved the conversation. I didn't know anything about these restaurants. So how do other commissioners up here know about all these future plans for the city? Just a handful, there's seven of us up here. And then when it comes to us with less information, and we have to deal with the little bit that we have, and we have to make a decision with the little bit of information that we're given, then we're attacked, because we didn't make the same decision that everybody else has made here. Well, I'm sorry, I only present one district, three, and what my commission, my residents want me to vote on, that's what I do, because believe it or not, I speak to some of my residents about issues that are coming up to vote. This was one of them, and you know what one of my residents said? Why are you asking me? That's your job, that's what I elected you for. I expect you to do what's right for our city. Again, it's not questioning his job as a city manager of what he's doing in the city, it's questioning the way that I feel being disrespected as a commissioner, by not being involved in everything that other commissioners are involved, by not sharing information that other commissioners are involved, and by following the last policy about how commissioners should run the city up here. That includes a travel policy, by the way. So let's just make sure, because I see faces here I've never seen before, that I have to work with. I am not coming out about his job that he's doing as a city manager. It's about my position here as a commissioner of seven, who he reports to. So if you've ever run in, if you've ever been a manager and run it, just think of what I'm talking about. It's very disrespectful. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you, Mayor. So this, the, there's a lot of information that's been given today that I'm not, don't know anything about. So I'd, but I wanna start with clearing something up. The, my comments about restaurants that are coming to the city regarding the Halifax crossing, that did not come from any meeting with staff. That came from meetings with the applicant, with other landowners that own land within the activity center. And so, that's, right there, that's got, we can't hold that against our city manager or staff. That's not something that I'm not sure that they were even aware of. Those were private conversations regarding that project with an applicant. There was, and then, I'd like to ask everybody some specific questions on, on the things that they mentioned, if that's okay, and if, if you don't feel comfortable sharing the details, then so be it, but Commissioner Caldwell, you had mentioned that there was information that you requested that was, you were told doesn't exist.
Commissioner, make sure you use your mic, please.
On the 28th of May, I requested any and all records showing the itemized cost of moving Deltona Water customer service to City Hall and moving code for, back to Water Department. On June 2nd, they replied, no records exist. On June 2nd, I requested any and all expenditures for the last two months regarding Robin Hayes, John McKinney, and Mayor Vila, as I knew he traveled to Tallahassee, and no records exist. On June 17th, I requested any and all expenditures for the city manager, deputy city manager, finance director, and all finance staff on the last three months, to include but not limited to the staff time, equipment, supply trucks, rentals, moving expenses of any kind, and any funds drawn off purchase orders for all city renovations and our facility improvements. Reply was, request is too broad. So yes, I am not getting information.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I ask Commissioner Caldwell, were these public records requests, or did you request them as a commissioner?
Commissioner, please make sure to use your mic.
Most of them is public records request, yes.
I do wanna flag two things. When you make requests as a public records request, all public records requests are treated the same, whether they come from a commissioner or a member of the public. Certainly, you have the right to meet with and talk to the city manager and request information from him. When you follow the public records request path, you have to be treated like everyone else. That's the city's policy and practice, which means that you get the same, exact same handling, and if there's a charge, you get the same charge, as long as it's not for a meeting, right? So, one thing that's an important thing to note, cities do not have an obligation under the law to answer requests for information. A public records request is for a record that exists. If a record does not exist, and you get an answer that says, no records exist, no records responsive to this request exist, it means that the specific thing you're looking for does not exist as a public record, and the city is under no obligation to create that record, which would be a request for information. Now, we get these all the time from the citizens. I want a spreadsheet showing this. If that spreadsheet doesn't exist, on the day that they request it, that, that's, then there's no responsive record. So I just wanna be clear that, as a commissioner, certainly you can go to the manager and ask whatever you want, but when you go through the public records request channel, you are treated the same, and I will say, we do, frankly, often have to say, no records that are responsive, there are no records responsive to this request, I'm not saying, I mean, for our office, yes, but also as a, you know, we've talked to the clerk, and say, if a record does not exist, you are under no obligation to create that record, and you should not, because you've now created a public record that didn't already exist. So certainly, that's a question, I think, for the clerk, but I just wanted to flag for you, probably a better path would just be directly to ask the manager.
I've had that conversation with Doc, and I've asked him what the estimated cost was on the move from City Water Department to City Hall, and vice versa, and surely they have that estimated cost before they proceed, do they not?
I was, Mayor, I was waiting so I can answer all these at one time, but...
We still have two more. Doc, I would suggest...
Yeah, that's fine.
I would just, to hold off...
Okay. I'm glad they're on the city manager's radar to address. Commissioner Howington, you, you had made a mention that the city manager has, has proceeded with things that were outside of his authority. Is it, are you okay sharing with us what, what he's done outside of his authority?
Well, usurping our power when Halifax crossings was put back on the agenda against our will, I think is a pretty good example. We tabled that item, and he decided that he would move forward with it at the applicant's request. So I'm sure I can sit here and come up with more examples, but that, right now, is probably the most critical in my mind.
Okay, thank you. I also have that as another item that I'd like to address. When I agreed to table that item, it was never under the impression with the date to be unknown until the lawsuit was settled. It was under the impression that we had just received a lawsuit that day, and I think, quite frankly, we all needed to know more information about it. That was, so when I, when my vote for tabling the Halifax crossing was to bring it back when we had more information about the lawsuit that was served that day. So I, I understand what your perspective is, but I would also like to provide my perspective and the intent behind my vote was to gather more information and then bring it back. And also, I, I'm glad that we followed the process that we have followed for at least one other, if not two other applicants within the last two months. If, if we start changing up the process on applicants and their ability to request additional rehearings, then, you know, legal is not my field of expertise by any means, but that just sounds like we're, we're asking for litigation, and I am, look, I am all for standing up for what we believe in, and I have no problems if that means that we face those kinds of challenges, as long as we face those challenges knowing that with reasonable certainty, we are in the right place legally.
Can I respond? I have one more.
Yeah.
So another one would be when the mayor traveled to Washington DC. That was a commission decision. That commission decision was never given to us. to us. Somebody let him take keys to a car. Somebody let him charge for a room.
Commissioner Howington, with all due respect, that, that item is...
You asked, you asked specifically, and I'm answering.
I appreciate the response, but that, that item has been addressed.
To ad nauseam, yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Avila Vasquez, you mentioned that commission policies were changed by the city manager. Do you, do you know what, when those policies were changed? Because I don't remember, like you, I don't remember voting on them either.
That was my point. Till this day, we are still running under old travel policies and old commission policies, because no new policies have come to us. But yet, the new policy for travel was followed. And I hate, I know that you don't want it to be mentioned, but it was followed for Washington DC trip. A new policy that never came to the city for commission.
Okay.
There's a policy out there for commission, the way we should be...
The decorum policy.
I've never seen it. I've never approved it. Have you?
No, I haven't.
That was my point.
My, my understanding and my recollection is that both the travel policy and the decorum policy have been on previous agendas, and at the request of a commissioner, they were tabled with an unknown date certain.
But they were being followed without being approved.
What, what part was, was being followed?
The new, the new policies that were written that never came to us for approval were being followed.
Are you referencing the travel?
I'm referencing travel, I'm referencing every other policy that has been put out there that has never come to us. And I don't think this is, you know, I mean, this is not a jury thing up here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
For some reason, you, you know, you're, you're coming back and forth, asking questions. This is, these are my opinions. This is what I mentioned, again, has nothing to do, and anybody can go back and see my evaluations of him. I gave him a good rating, except for the commission, and, and interaction with commissions. So, these are my, this is my opinion, and I don't think that I should be going into details of, of, with you, anyway.
And I, I respect that. I just, this is, this is something that is extremely serious that we're accusing him of.
I agree with you.
And the, these aren't things that I've experienced. And, and so that's why I just would, was asking for additional details from you guys.
And that's why I made it very clear that it's only certain commissioners. I didn't say that it was all commissioners.
There's, there... At the end of the, at the end of the day, there are things that I, that Doc and I are absolutely, have been working on, getting on the same page with. I feel like there are some commissioners up here, ironically, that are in favor of this vote of no confidence, that from my perspective, it feels like they're getting everything that they've been asked for. The city manager had, and it's my understanding that, that staff has been directed, that when they reply to one commissioner, they copy all the other commissioners. And there's, there are a lot of times where I see that the requests that are getting a reply to are consistently for commissioners that I, quite frankly, they're just, there's a lot of requests that that look like they're being addressed from the commissioners.
Excuse me, sorry. If I can hear you up here, the rest of the people can hear, and we, we're trying to get a conversation done. So please.
It just, it really appears that the commissioners that are supporting this vote of no confidence are commissioners that do get a majority of their requests fulfilled and, and put on the agenda. Commissioner Lully, I thought that your, your kind of olive branch was phenomenal idea. I, I think that that's a great way. That's a, I think that that's a productive place to take this conversation. I think by, by doing what's been proposed today with a vote of no confidence, it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the city manager nearly as much as it tar and feathers the city. And, and we've been, we're at a point where we've had a city manager for a year. I have heard from other agencies, state agencies, that we have not had very good relationships with in the past, that were extremely positive and have had absolutely nothing but the best things to say about our city manager. And, and this is coming, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's from St. John's Water Management District, and she had no idea that I was even a city commissioner. It was just a conversation that got started and was extremely positive about the working relationship between their agency and the city of Deltona with Doc. And, you know, we've heard from a ton of community leaders over the last few days. I've talked to a lot of neighbors, and the absolute support for Doc is overwhelming. You know, the, a good city manager responds only to the commissioners. He does everything that the commissioners ask for. I'm not looking for good. This city deserves a great city manager. A great city manager builds consensus among the community. A great city manager tells, quite frankly, tells us, me included, when our requests aren't following the, the proper channels, when that request can't be, he can't fill that request, or just sometimes, no. I'm looking for a great city manager that has a vision for our city, that can see farther than next week, that can see farther than next month. And I, I have to tell you, I have, I have the utmost confidence in Doc Doherty as the city manager of Deltona. I do think that, I do think that Commissioner Lully's, I think that your suggestion would, would take us and kind of, I think it would fulfill the need for some of that, that discussion that we have, we really need to have. And, and not just with Doc, but amongst the seven of us, right? Because I think a lot of the dysfunction that we're seeing is not between this body and the city manager. A lot of the dysfunction is between the seven of us. I mean, you, you got seven personalities.
You go judging everybody else. You know, this is about...
Point of order. Can we please let each of us finish? Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
That, that wasn't intended to be a negative. It really, it wasn't intended to be, intended to be a negative. But I, I, I'll just, I'll just end it with this, that the absolute outpouring of support from this community as a whole, from staff that enjoys coming to work every day, from our fellow elected that support him, and in turn, support our community, has really solidified my position on this issue and supporting our city manager with voting not for this item.
Commissioner Santiago, then Commissioner Caldwell, then Commissioner Avila Vasquez, then Commissioner Howington.
Thank you, Mayor. Doc, you have been a phenomenal city manager for this city. You've done amazing work since you started, since day one, and it's been just full force ahead. I can't even, there's so many accomplishments that you have done for this city. Just gonna name a few. Employee-friendly atmosphere. I've never seen the employees so happy with you. I, I've hear it all the time.
Excuse me, Commissioner Santiago. If I hear one more outburst, the officer in the back that's watching you is gonna have you removed from, from city, from, from the place. Go ahead, Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you, Mayor. You've reduced outside interference that disrupted the city employees' work, daily work. You've done so many things at City Hall that are positive. You've addressed concerns that have come up. You've implemented many processes, especially the zero-based budget, something that we've asked for. You've updated the travel policy and the city purchasing policy. And what, we're, we're, we're in one year? Just one year? Right? I know, as we were getting ready to hire a city manager, we didn't have a finance director, a planning director, a deputy city manager, an HR director, economic development director, a building official. You did that. You have an amazing team behind you. And you promoted other positions as well. And, and also, something that I've never seen when I was working here, is you got a grant writer. And now you hear the projects that we're doing, guess what? They're getting grants. They're getting funded. Something that seven city managers didn't do in the past five years. He's getting them done. Community events. Sir, you have placed Deltona amazingly with community events, the amphitheater, this Celtic festival, Santa's mailbox. We've, we've had Deltona University, which has been phenomenal for the citizens. You've been involved in any situation that the city has, whether it's flooding, whether it's street, anything that we've asked for, you, you're doing. City of Deltona is very lucky to have a, a man like Doc Doherty. Thank you for everything you do for the city, Doc. I appreciate it very much. And I know a lot of people in this audience do as well. You have a lot of support. I know Sheriff Chitwood sent in a letter of support as well. So thank you, sir.
Commissioner Caldwell, then Commissioner Avila Vasquez, and Commissioner Howington.
I think that's great for you, that you get all the information down there at the end. I want to touch, see how you become the, this became an interrogation, and you seem to be the, the lead counsel here. When these, the project at Halifax was brought back to the commission, right after the initial tabling, was it presented to the city clerk 11 days prior to the regular meeting? Isn't that our policy? Section 3, Agenda? I, you know, it's not my intent to remove Doc from office. It's more of a corrective action that I think needs to be taken to, you know, make it fair for all of us up here. We're all not getting the same information. She speaks of several grants that we're, we've gotten. Is that what you said? And those grants are, because I'm not aware of them. He hasn't told, he ha, he hasn't told me. He hasn't told me. The problem is, is we're not getting information, all of us. And it needs to change. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez, then Commissioner Howington, then Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my actions here today is about my interactions with the city manager. I have nothing to say of his performance with outside of, of city and staff. But I can tell you that a lot of stuff, I wasn't mentioning it, but since you brought it up, Commissioner Santiago, employee atmosphere, I love, I love city staff. And I will never throw any of them under the bus. So my mouth will be shut. Updated travel policy. It wasn't up to him to update that. It was up to us. Grants, you see all former senior staff sitting around? They got those grants, not the city manager. They got those grants. Community events, Parks and Recs always has community events for our residents. Deltona University, we already had that. It wasn't Deltona University, but we had that. It was by a former employee that worked here, came from Daytona State College. We had that already. That he improved them absolutely. Hats off to him. But all that stuff already existed. So let's be real about this. Flooding, we still have flooding. We still have flooding. Right now, we were discussing the school on Doyle, still getting flooded. So that's, that's something that's still, and I'm not blaming him for it. Absolutely not. Under no conditions am I blaming him for it. But that's something that we still need to work on. So it's not like it has been resolved. Flooding has not been resolved. So, again, I agree with Commissioner Lully. Maybe, you know, we can take this a step further. Absolutely. I'm not here to, or even like Commissioner Steve said, we're not here to try to get rid of, of, of the city manager. We're not here for that. But there comes a time that a, that a manager of any department has to address staff and let them know, hey, there's rules that you have to follow. You can't just do some things on your own without bringing it to us. Because when I, residents come to me, when you, when everybody sits here, who gets yelled at? It's us. And sometimes, I got, both of us got yelled at here by Richard Belik one day for $10,000 bill. And we're looking at each other. We had no idea what the heck he was talking about. Had to do some questioning and then find out what it was about. Things like that, I mean, we should be aware of, and we're not. So again, these are my personal reasons why I'm doing this. I don't have a problem going with your suggestion, Commissioner Lully, at all. But this needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Excuse me. Commissioner Howington, then Commissioner Santiago, then Vice Mayor Harriet, then we'll go to the city manager.
I just want to make it very clear that when I am referring to what's happening, similar to Commissioner Avila Vasquez, the issues that I have are specifically within the, with the interactions with myself primarily, as well as what I'm seeing with other commissioners. If you look at the review, I believe I actually gave you some fairly high ratings for how you work with community concerns and things like that. There are areas where you excel, and I 100% recognize that. And I applaud you for that. However, there is some communication issues. And I'm not saying I'm not perfect. I'm sure I'm partly to blame as well. But when we look at this, there are issues. Just like the others, I'm not looking to remove you. That was not the intent. The intent is to bring this back together, because obviously, people aren't getting the same information or feeling as if they are informed. I felt rather blindsided with the workshop where we did the Del, the Deltona, Keep Deltona Wild, and then we had the overlay. I felt completely out of the loop on that, because I didn't know what that overlay was. I, I expressed that during the workshop. There was an instance when we were in Gainesville for training, and Commissioner Santiago had mentioned asking about an amount for the purchasing policy, which I knew nothing about. And then lo and behold, like a week or two later, whatever the timeframe was, we were presented with a purchasing policy. Which made me think, whether it was true or not, that one commissioner knew of a policy that was coming down the pipeline that I was unaware of. So, you know, I understand having seven managers is a challenge. We all have different personalities, different expectations, different asks. And so I can't even imagine what it's like to be in your position. But from my perspective, that's where I am responding. That's all I've got. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as I'm listening to everybody speak, and I heard Commissioner Lully come up with a suggestion, and I think if we could move to do that and just put this vote of no confidence to rest and maybe come together so we can, like you said, maybe it's a time to heal, maybe it's something that we need to hash out with the city manager. But I think that's a great suggestion, and we should move forward to doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Harriet, Commissioner Lully, and Caldwell, and then we will, after that, get to the city manager, please.
If this is just a regular action item, is there anything that prevents me from making a motion?
No, you can make a motion. We still have public comment and listening to the city manager.
I was just going to make a motion to proceed with the suggested workshop.
He can still make a motion. We just, we can't vote until we have public comment. And also, we have Commissioner Lully, and then we also have the city manager.
That was your idea. So, if you wanted to make that motion, I'd be more than welcome to.
Who else is on the, we have other commissioners on the board still?
Just you.
Okay. I would like to, I would like to make a motion to conduct a commission work session in which the items that would fall under this vote of no confidence that have been expressed tonight would be discussed. The logistics and specifics of the date, time, and location are to be finalized in working with the city attorney's office, to be held under Sunshine laws and other applicable statutes, off-site. And recognizing that, some, and recognizing that some members of the commission have expressed frustration with communication and other issues.
There's a motion by Commissioner Lully.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Harriet. Commissioner Lully, you are up next on the board. Did you still want to talk?
Yes, if I may, and then I was going to ask a couple of questions over to the charter officers, if that's okay, and I guess that might segue over to the city manager.
Correct.
And I just want to make sure before we vote and I vote, I just wanted to make sure that, because I think the answer to these determines how we proceed with that. Mr. City Manager, are you, are you willing to accept all performance reviews that have been, that, from each member of the commission for this year?
Not all of them have been put in at this time, but I accept them at all. I review them, go through the details.
Okay.
I do that every year, and I've done that for 30 years of my career. So, yes, it's very important to understand what the commissioners are looking for, and it certainly is different seven, different personalities going in different directions. But yes, I always take it to heart and make sure that we're better from the evaluation, yes.
And would you be willing to participate in a work session with us to discuss some of the things that have been brought up tonight?
I would have no problem with that, but I'd also like to respond to all those points that were brought up tonight. So, there are answers to these questions. But no, I'd have absolutely no issue with, we've had retreats in many other governments I've been in, retreats work, and I support that 100%, yes.
Thank you. And then just quickly for the city attorneys, the conclusion of the vote of no confidence tonight, and I'm asking this because there have been instances with city managers in the city where bad things have happened, you know, criminal type of things, before my time. Does the conclusion of this tonight preclude a future vote of no confidence if there is something that comes up that's dire or egregious?
No, not at all. This isn't like a double jeopardy situation. You all can do this every meeting, if you like. We would certainly urge you to put it on the agenda. Obviously, it's important for the public to be noticed because this is a consequential vote. And while a regular meeting agenda notice is sufficient, you can add items. When there is an item that's an important item, it is recommended by the AGO to give the public notice so they can be aware if it's a controversial topic. But no, you're welcome to, as a body, you can do this whenever, whenever you see fit.
Thank you. And just one other comment, Mayor, if I may. I want to thank everyone for sharing their, their feedback tonight. That's not easy to do. I understand completely with, with the frustrations that you've expressed, and I respect that. And I thank you for bringing this to the attention of the commission because I think we're, you know, we're in the middle of hurricane season. We have, you know, ballistic missiles being fired at our troops in the Middle East. This is, this is a crazy world. And I think if we can, we can work together to move forward on this. If the intent, of course, was not to terminate, then I would very much like to do that with all of you. And again, I completely understand where everyone has come from tonight, and I agree that there are, there is room for improvement. And I believe that we all deserve, I believe, the respect that you're asking for. And I think, in listening to everyone, I think that there is a lack of, whether it's just perceived or not, there's a lack, I think, of trust, maybe, amongst certain commissioners. And again, I completely understand that. And so, to regain that trust, I think would be important. And I know we have other items tonight as well that I think are on that same topic. And, you know, I think I'm willing to, you know, support a lot of those based on that lack of trust that's been expressed tonight until we have that, that work, that work session to get more into the meat of this. So, again, I really appreciate everyone's input, and thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to city manager, and then we'll go to public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to respond to some of these statements, and then I, then I have a statement I'd like to make myself. Real quick, some of the grants, was questioned what grants? LCAM roadway elevation, which was on the commission's docket of, just a couple of months ago. Catalina Boulevard roadway elevation, again, so we have traffic moving during storms. That was on the commission's docket a few, a couple of months ago. As we all know, just recently, City Hall generator came through for about $750,000 to keep the city hall running at any time, not just during storms. Actually, in your last agenda, is another $265,000 for the critical asset comprehensive vulnerability assessment. Let's not forget the $900,000, all brought to the commission for Providence, McGirti, Gleason Basin studies, and certainly the $22 million that staff received for the Fisher Water Plant. So, question about what grants, there's the answer there. No, we have not changed the commission's guidelines, travel policy, or the guidelines. That has been asked since I got here. We've discussed it. Certainly, your policies are outdated, as far as I'm concerned. Working with the clerk, when it came to the guidelines of running meetings and things, we suggested, let's set up, you know, some new options. It's unfortunate, and I apologize to the commission, that when people come to the microphone and say you're trying to cut the time down four minutes, two minutes, or some other issues we put in, that was not the commission's decision. That was a recommendation from staff to say, if you're going to look at your guidelines, here's some options. Now, we haven't had that workshop, so no guidelines have been changed. But when we have that workshop in the next, I believe, few weeks, next month, the commission will just look at their guidelines. I'm taking away my recommendations. That was just something from, from 30 years of experience working in many different communities. The travel policy, as a reminder to everybody, I changed the employees' travel policy. The employees work 100% under the city manager. So, we have our own travel policy. It wasn't until a couple of weeks after the mayor got back from DC that it became evident, and everyone else found out also, including commissioners, that there was another policy that belonged to the commissioners. So, whatever he did on his trip was not approved by the city manager. I don't approve trips for the commissioners. But certainly, I don't believe we were aware at the time that he may have needed permission. And I don't believe anyone on the commission knew that that policy existed until after he returned. So, to say that the city manager was at fault for allowing him to do something against policy, nobody knew that policy existed. In reference to Tallahassee, I did tell you, Commissioner Caldwell, three hotel stays and a tank of gas. But it was under, I believe, the executive assistants, who normally book your hotels when you go to conferences and things. If you ask for my credit card or someone else's, looking for information, back to what the attorney said, if there's not a document under mine, that there's no document. But I did say, and by the way, it's on the governor's desk. We're hoping if he does sign, and I'll mention this in a moment, he does sign the state budget, we will be receiving $3 million. So, the, the three of us that went and used the hotel and one tank of gas for $500 or less, we may be looking at $3 million. But that's not hidden information. It's out there. It was just, if you ask the wrong question, this is what I want, and that's not in that area, you're not going to get that, that information. Restaurants. The commissioners have all gone on their own flights to go meet different people about trying to bring restaurants to the city. We have not had any secret meetings at City Hall, talking about what restaurants are coming or not coming. So, the fact that the last meeting, somebody did mention, why don't we know about all these restaurants coming? I, I don't know about all these restaurants coming, if they're coming. Some of you commissioners are doing your own economic development, trying to find contacts and talking to people in other towns to come, which is certainly encouraged. But there is no information that anybody's missing in reference to restaurants, and I believe Vice Mayor had mentioned that, that that was something that he was doing. It was not, not here by the city or city staff. The personnel policy is under the city manager's purview. The city council sets policies, citywide, big policies. But again, there, not, there's not one employee that works under the commissioners that work under me directly. So, the city manager has, has responsibilities, and one of them is making sure we have our personnel policy in place. They may have tried to do something in 2020, but that's not, that is no relative or relativity to this thing here. So, we change personnel policies to be more updated, but it's not something that needs to come to the, to the commission. Staff will attest, I have an absolute mantra, what goes to one, goes to all. And department heads will all say it, they've heard me say it at staff meetings. If I'm having a conversation with a commissioner about a pothole out in front of their friend's business, it's on the street, okay, yeah, we'll take care of it. That's, we should, there's a hole in the street. We don't take care of personal parking lots. We will not do that. This city is the first place that I've actually had somebody on the commission direct me or ask me to go get rid of a ticket for their friends. I will not do that. I talked about that during my interview, stood at that microphone, and said, I will not take care of friends. I don't do that at all. That's not my ethics. So, therefore, we don't take care of special deals. But as far as going to one, goes to all. There's, why, why would we not? Want to make sure everybody's informed. Now, if there's a time that, use an example that I believe was, was it the purchasing policy that was just mentioned here? I mentioned to Commissioner Caldwell about the grant that we received at the generator, about the generator. He was sitting in the office, we were having a conversation. I said, oh, by the way, tonight, I'm sending out an email. Yeah, he found out about the generator quickly. Not that it's an issue, I'm just saying, use an example. There are times that a commissioner stops by in City Hall, we're finishing up a project, we might, myself or staff, might whisper and say something about it, but we didn't move on it. We didn't ask them for their opinion on how we should do it. It's, it just happened to be a conversation of just in passing. But commissioners, you get one, everybody gets the same. Halifax, I think I could speak a little bit for the city attorneys because that was a conversation that we had. Technically, if you're going to table an option, you have to give a date certain. When you table an option and say, it's going to happen sometime when the court case is closed, that's not a date certain. Therefore, we basically said to these developers, we're going to table you, and we're going to get back to you, eh. We can't say eh. It's got to be a date certain. I know it was discussed at the table, the words date certain, Commissioner Caldwell certainly said it, but it was not defined other than during the conversation when the court case is over. That's not a date certain. So, for us to bring that item back to the commission for review, that's basically to keep us out of a lawsuit liability-wise. That wasn't circumventing the will of the commission, as it's been said several times. Tonight, it is good government so that the citizens don't have to pay for a major lawsuit because we made a decision without actually a date certain. So, and just for the record, I was already told that apparently, these developers that I'm in bed with, which I don't know, things like that, actually led to, apparently, they're paying for my children's college education. Now, I have two children left in college, my wife and I, and they both attend the United States Military Academy at West Point. West Point is free. And not only that, but they're paid as soldiers to go to West Point. So, when we deal with rumors and innuendo in the city, apparently, people believe that developers are paying for my kids to go to a free college. In 30 years, I have never taken money for anything like that, so that's never happened. Going out of town and leaving the place in a lurch, we were in Orlando. We could be back in a moment's notice. And not only in, in fact, actually, we spend most of the time on the telephone or emailing with commissioners and staff alike. It's not an enjoyable conference when you go and you spend the whole time, instead of learning, you're out in the lobby, talking to staff and talking to the commissioner. So, I didn't feel that anybody left the city in a lurch and an emergency happened, we're here. I think the implications sound like we all went out of state somewhere and, and nobody was here. So, we were good. Golden Book, clearly budgeted, approved by the former commission, and we came in half of it, half the budget that we put in for, it's half under budget. I'm not quite sure what, did we put money to enforce the policies? They literally are the city's policies. So, I'm not sure putting the golden book out that there was a disadvantage if we're not enforcing the policy. Well, they're the city's policy, it's the city rules. So, I think we should, you know, let people know what the rules are. And it's helped drastically. A lot of citizens are calling. Now, they know how to take care of their property, but they're also pointing the finger at the, at their neighbors now that they understand. Let's see what other, I'm scribbling around here, there's different topics were coming up. So, financial policies, yes. Commissioner Howington has been asking, and she has received information back and forth from the staff of exactly what they're looking for. And I believe 900 pages were printed out for the commissioners of financial information before this was going to become a topic here tonight. But there was other information and reports that were given to her, and if you need more detail, I believe our deputy, deputy clerk can stand up. Before I go into, what I'd like to do is make a statement, since I understood that this was going to be happening. I do want to make one more point before I move on to that. Mayor, please. That's 3,782. 3,782 emails have come to City Hall from the sitting commission with questions, you know, looking for answers, information back and forth. In the time that the commission's been up here, this isn't the whole 12 months I've been here, some have been here eight months, some have been here 12 months, 3, 3,782 emails. And staff has responded to, I would say, as many as we possibly could, if not all of them. So, if something slips through the crack, and certainly things can, but that's, that's an enormous amount of emails when you consider that we also have a full-time job. All of us do, all the staff. But we respond all day, every day, to a whole lot of emails. Now, just like to say a few things. There's no question, I knew Deltona was going to be a challenge when I started here one year ago. I am the seventh city manager since 2020. And let me say that again. I am the seventh person to sit in this chair in the last five years. Possibly the 16th out of the last 30 years. Every day in my first month in Deltona, someone asked me if I either knew how bad Deltona was or how long I planned on staying. One city manager in the region said his guilty pleasure was working out his fitness center, listening to Deltona City Council meetings because of the dysfunction that was going on. That's what I'm hearing in my first week when I got here. So, it's not an easy job to reorganize a city that's been broken for so long. Due to rumors, innuendo, and many times just lies, this city runs literally at 100 miles an hour, 10 different directions, nights, weekends, holidays. It does not stop. I believe I've proven my, to make myself available to the commission overall, at any time, nights, weekends, holidays, 24/7. I take calls, take emails, that's it. Managing the city of Deltona is not a job or a career. It literally is a way of life. If you aren't willing to dedicate every minute of your life to this job, living in an unhealthy, stressful atmosphere, then a manager in this seat will not be successful. Even in this type of atmosphere, our Deltona staff is greatly resilient. For some reason, people believe in conspiracies. They believe there's always something going on in our local government. Since I am new, most of the executive staff is new, and even half the commission has changed over in the past year, how can you have conspiracies? There's no deep state in Deltona because the employees have not stayed here long enough to create such an atmosphere. Our great employees come to work, and then they go home to their families. There are no conspiracies. Although I walked into the city with bad reputation, I'm very proud that over the past past year, my staff and I have significantly changed that negative reputation in the region to be more positive. I filled the numerous open positions in the city leadership with great professional talent that I promoted up, as well as brought in some from the outside, and their direction for me was simple. There will be excellence in everything we do, and everything should be bigger and better. We've been able to assemble an excellent team, one capable of executing the vision and goals set by this commission. Through stable leadership and the much-needed increase in employee pay, we also now have a city staff that's finally feeling secured, valued, and happy to come to work for our residents. In a short time, Deltona has changed from being a place nobody wanted to apply to, to becoming a employer of choice. I'm extremely proud of what our staff has done in a very short time to bring structure and professional government to Deltona, and believe as a staff, we've been very successful. And what are some of the projects we've done this past year? Well, we reduced the tax mileage in my first year with the, and with the implementation of a zero-based budget, will greatly reduce the tax mileage again this year. I believe our next topic tonight is going to be our audit review, and a review I think the residents will be proud to hear because of our staff's financial decisions. In addition, our great city staff has received nearly thirty million dollars in grant money this past year, with three million more coming in for two significant water projects, assuming the governor signs the bill that's sitting on his desk, and we don't get vetoed out. Again, that's thirty million dollars in grant money brought to Deltona this year. Our activities include moving the water payments to City Hall, so all the services are in one place, something should have probably been done decades ago. We updated the city purchasing policy, the employees' personnel policies, as well as many miscellaneous policies, many of them coming through the commission, by the way, that are related to the commission's actions. Created the much-utilized golden book, which by the way, again, was in the budget and came under budget when it came to printing and delivering. We also started Deltona University to teach our residents about their government, much more detailed, I believe, than something that was done a few years ago. We added an expanded city festival, such as the Celtic Fest, the Egg Haunt, MLK Fest, and assisted this past weekend's Juneteenth Festival. We also added regular amphitheater concerts and regular movies in the park. We're planning the redesign of city parks right now, including a pickleball complex, several rubber walking trails, and the expansion of the Veterans Museum, all coming in the future to the city commission for their approval. This summer, we started a free summer camp program at various summer parks to keep our latchkey kids busy and out of trouble. Again, that was in the budget approved by the commission. We're planning for new fire stations and making sure our firefighter paramedics have the equipment needed to better serve our residents. That's coming, as you heard, in the next couple of weeks for discussion. We fully migrated our phone system and call center to the cloud, adding functionality such as customer callbacks, so we're more efficient with the residents. We expanded fiber optic cables to several city buildings and parks across the city with a mix of city and grant funding for better connectivity for the future as technology grows. We brought the CRA back into reporting compliance with the county and state requirements. We presented various public workshops to support the creation of the Long-Term Range Community Deltona Vision 2050 Plan. Staff has been dealing with the new Starbucks, a new Dairy Queen, a new Chipotle, and a new Culvers Restaurant coming to Deltona, as well as several business parks that include areas of more retail. Culvers, yes. We made scores of key updates to land development code from expanding driveway code as requested by Commissioner Caldwell to implementing home-based business code, again, for the future as home businesses are becoming large. Staff launched new online platforms and interactive resources to improve transparency and access to planning information. Staff requested a zoning in progress for storm order and expanded that to class meeting to address stormwater management and drainage issues. Staff's in the final stage of completing the citywide comprehensive plan updates. Staff's working with a consultant, develop a conservation-based overlay that will protect undisturbed natural lands, as requested by Commissioner Lully, and approved by the commission. The Rhode Island Extension Study is underway to relieve congestion at Graves Avenue and Highland Boulevard intersection. Through our housing department, nearly two million dollars in federal and state funds were distributed to infrastructure initiatives and low-income residents to assist with neighborhood stabilization and affordable housing. In preparation for future storms, staff has performed citywide stormwater pipelining, rehabilitation, and buried emergency stormwater piping for easy hookup during any future storms. The city bought two sandbag machines to pre-fill bags for residents to easily receive bags as needed. This uses fewer staff and makes us more efficient during storms. We are in the design and engineering phase of raising El Cam Boulevard, Catalina Boulevard, so the traffic is no longer interrupted during storms, both paid for by grants. I mentioned earlier the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the City Hall generator, so that we can always run services for our citizens. We're finishing the installation of thirty-five-thousand-water meters installed ahead of schedule and under budget. Even our wastewater plants are more efficient since we increased capacity by fifty percent this past year. And of course, we stay true to having an open door to speak and meet with residents and community groups at any time. I could add hundreds more projects to the shortlist, but it does give everyone an idea of how our staff has made great positive changes in the past twelve months. I didn't come to Deltona for a temporary stay. I came to Deltona into, to create it into a professionally structured government, to be a model government in Volusia County. With an attempt to discredit me like the many city managers before me, it's no wonder that things fall through the cracks. Why did the city receive a notice from the IRS that there was almost a one-million-dollar charge against the city of Deltona? Well, because we've had seven city managers in the past five years. And by the way, during my administration, we've ended the IRS issue at no cost to the city. Why hasn't the city considered updating impact fees in the past five years, as it's been asked by the commission? Because Deltona has had seven city managers in the past five years. And by the way, the staff is directed by the commission on April seventh to bid out the impact fee study. As you know, there are strict rules around the impact fees, which does not allow us just to use old information. So in the three-month period, the norm for such a study to be bid out, the topic was asked for by the commission. The specs were put together, the bid was advertised, we had to wait for submissions, the submissions are analyzed, and the bid award will be brought to the commission, actually, in the next few weeks. So the commission asked for staff to move forward on an impact fee study a couple of months ago, and it is being awarded in July. Again, because of the stability of the current staff, issues dropped before us are now getting done. Another example is when Commissioner Caldwell asked about updating the right-of-way ordinance. I wasn't aware of it, but apparently he was working with the former city attorney on the issue. No problem with me, but when she was ousted, the request was dropped. I picked it up when he told me about it just a few weeks ago, and our new city attorneys are in the process of completing the request for commission's review. After bringing it to my attention, it is now in progress and will be done. It's clear that instability in leadership brings chaos to a city, and good government takes a break. But as I stated earlier, our currently-stable staff is getting the work done. And now a few people are attempting to push out another city manager. I was hired into a contentious atmosphere over the past year, and I was willing to make unpopular decisions, which I thought was the right choice for the city. As is taught at Deltona University, I have a distinct job that is not overseen by the city commission. By charter and law, the city manager is to manage the city as they see fit, without interference by the city commission. When the city commission implements a new ordinance or a major city policy, then it is the city manager's job to work with the staff and implement that major decision. But as you know, it's not easy for our staff to satisfy the commissioners' requests when there appears to be very different desires. Threading the needle to satisfy everyone equally is a challenge in itself, but I feel the staff has done an exceptional job in keeping so many different plates spinning at the same time. So besides the mayor and city commission, I understand that I work for a hundred thousand Deltona residents. To lead, I always focus on what's right, not what is popular. In many instances, I have to choose the harder right over the easier wrong to bring structure to our organization. In an era of social media, I do my best to know the difference between what is important and what is temporary fodder for the moment. I believe I've shown the stability needed to bring calm to the city of Deltona, as well as the determination to move forward, move the city forward to becoming a more respected leader in the region. In fact, I do truly believe it is a great time to be in Deltona. But in closing, Mayor, I'm just proud to say that a number of the employees have asked me to speak this evening in favor of my leadership, but with concern for them being negatively affected by offering their support, I asked them not to speak, but I do greatly appreciate their support and friendship. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to public comment, please.
Glenn Whitcomb, please.
Oh, boy.
Obviously, Doc, I apologize, I didn't listen to you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Attorney, our residents that are behind me here, and staff. My name is Glenn Whitcomb, I'm the, I am a resident and also an employee of the city of Deltona. I've worked here for many years in different categories, different seats here, but I would like to speak in support of our city manager, Doc. Since his arrival about a year ago, June the tenth, twenty-twenty-four to be exact, he's made some positive changes, both for the residents and employees alike. He is willing to step up and make those changes, or make these changes for the city to make things better for everyone. The morale of the employees has greatly improved, and employees want to come to work and do the best that they can. I witnessed that in my department. I spread what Doc spreads as far as positivity goes, and our employees, we, in fact, there are some here tonight. We do support Doc. As I said, the morale of the employees has greatly improved, our employees do want to come to work and do the best that they can do. Doc has reinforced accountability, stability, and independent thinking of employees and department heads. He encourages us to strive for excellence in everything that we do, and to think outside the box on all issues. Doc has stated that he wants the best employees working in Deltona, he wants people that are hardworking, honest, and prideful in the work that they perform. He wants to bring, he wants us to bring our A-game every day, not just once in a while, but every day. "Good enough is not good enough anymore," as he always says. He wants us to come to him with solutions.
Thank you, Glenn. Patricia Northey, please.
Rob Tommeta, please.
I think Ms. Northey was called first. Did you still want to speak, Ms. Northey? And I want to apologize, because I believe you asked me, and I might have given you the incorrect, well, no, I gave you the incorrect information, so I apologize. You have the, you can, two minutes.
All right. My name is Pat Northey, and I reside at Twenty-Three Ten Carson Lane, Deltona. I am your former District Five County Councilmember, having served from nineteen ninety-three through two thousand and four, and two thousand and seven through two thousand and fourteen. I have lived in Deltona since nineteen seventy-three. My husband and I raised our two sons here, where they attended Volusia County Schools and went to former Mayor John's daycare center as youngsters at the age of three and five. I have been involved in this community and have served this city since the mid-nineteen-eighties, when my sons were scouts and I was active in the PTA. I served on the Deltona MSD Board beginning in nineteen eighty-seven, serving for five years, which preceded the incorporation of our city in nineteen ninety-six. I have been engaged in the lifeblood of Deltona for a very long time. With few exceptions, I have served longer than some of you have been alive. I have made it a rule not to appear before you on matters of your elected business, although I have served on several committees that make recommendations to you all. I currently serve on the P and Z Board. I fought in the corporation wars on the side of incorporating, and when that vote was settled, I sat in a cigarette-smoked, filled Chamber of Commerce Board room and worked on a ballot for a new mayor and commission. And on a rainy New Year's Eve in nineteen ninety-five, I ceremoniously turned the keys over to the city and our new mayor, John Massarzic, as we began the role of building a city. I remember telling the press that the earth moved that night in Volusia County, we had plans for such greatness. Unfortunately, we are almost thirty years later, and greatness never materialized. We never moved a damn thing. We have been through a series of professional managers, they have turnover, and I can't count the number of strategic plans I participated in, too many to count, and many were not done anything. Not much to show for thirty years, except for a city that has lurched from one year to the next election. Didn't matter who the manager was or who was sitting on the dais, the outcomes are always the same. So let me fast forward to Monday night. I don't think I ever been as embarrassed as I was for my city and for my professional, and for the professional management that is the heart of our former governor watching the opening of that meeting. We have gone through seven managers in five years, some of-
Thank you.
Can she finish up real quick?
You told me four minutes.
She's reading as fast as she can.
I had that in a text.
We, Ms. Northey, that's, I take full responsibility, that was my fault, I do apologize for that.
Kill the agenda item, work the work session, and do your duty on policymaking.
Thank you, Ms. Northey. I stopped it.
No, you didn't.
I, excuse me, excuse me, one more outburst and you're gone. We want to hear every single one of you, but we need to keep order in this chamber. Excuse me, we need to keep order in this chamber. Ma'am, if you give one more outburst, you're going to be gone.
Fine, I'm gone.
Can you please remove her?
Rob Tommeta, please.
Rob Tommeta, Deltona. I didn't have anything prepared for this, but what I would like to say is, is I think there's a disconnect, there's a disconnect between Emma, what Emma's pointed out, what Doc's pointed out, and what the, what's happening on the dais. And, I don't know, it appears to me that Doc does work for the commissioners. I mean, that's, you know, you guys are the bosses, you guys can hire and fire. Bottom line is, is Doc, you've obviously done something to piss these people off, and they're good people. Every one of these people up here are trying to do their best, even the ones I disagree with adamantly. They're trying to do their best, and I don't understand why it's your responsibility to try to work with these people. You got a four-to-three negative vote, so four of these people thought that they wanted to do a vote of no confidence. It may not turn out that way, but four to three, so you got the problem, not them. You got to take care of your relationships, not them. Did you call any of these people and sit down with them and talk with them this last week and say, wow, what's going on? How can I change? I heard all of the good things you did, but I didn't hear one apology saying, if I've done something, if I've offended, if I've not done the right thing, please tell me, come to my office, please share with me, and I will try to change. You are not Mother Teresa. So solve the problem, because you're talented, you can do the job, but not if you don't-
Thank you.
Eventually, you're going to have five people vote against you, and I don't want to see that happen.
David Stewart, please.
Commissioners, staff, everyone here, thank you, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Stewart, and I have my wife here and my three incredible children, and I have to say, commissioners, I was disappointed and shocked at the last meeting. We watched it as a family, all four-plus hours of it, riveting. And I was disappointed, I was embarrassed. We can't make decisions of this magnitude based on a feeling, or making evaluations based on personal interactions, but approving of actual performance. This aggressive approach creates uncertainty and negatively impacts public perception of our beautiful city. Doc, recently, the hierarchy of the city of Deltona was posted online, and I, as a citizen, at the top of that, want to share and highlight some things that I'm thankful for. Number one, communication, your videos, online, response to emails and questions in person, thank you for communicating clearly and effectively the vision for this city, for being transparent, sharing information in an effective matter, like the golden book, utilizing print. I've been able to use that with neighbors who don't have access to social media or use smartphones. Video and social media, clarity and accessibility, breaking down complex information into bytes, bite-sized pieces for a wide range of residents. I want to thank you for your consistency. With over one year, I appreciate your commitment and focus to making Deltona a great place to live, work, and play, by maintaining regular progress updates on city projects, showing steady and strong leadership and dependability, maintaining focus in the city's long-term goals. I want to highlight another C, kilts. Just kidding, I know that starts with a K, but community. We're actively creating opportunities for residents to share their input through public forums, town halls, surveys, active events, and all of these things. While we may not agree on a hundred percent of every decision, I want to thank you- While we may not agree on 100% of every decision, I want to thank you for your strong leadership.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's CJ, for those of you who don't know me. I'm the P shift steward for Local 2913, Deltona Professional Firefighters. I'm here representing 84 operations personnel and to say that we actually support our city manager. To think that he's only been in a year and then hear the list of everything that he's done, I definitely hear your, hear everything you're going, dealing with communication-wise, it sounds like it's more communication issues than anything, but he's done a ton. And to think that it's only been a year that he's been able to, think about when he started and when you guys first came on the dais, we had nobody working here. For every major role in the city, we had a deficit. And so within a year, he was able to fill those seats and create a crew to direct the ship and go forward and think about, remember, the captain doesn't steer the ship on his own, he has a crew. And he was able to build that crew. And I think that's a magnificent thing. You know, he's been able to get grants. In my 16 years being here, I don't think we've ever gotten that much money. My 16 years being here, I don't think morale's ever been as high as it is amongst not only the fire department, but citywide. And I feel comfortable in saying that not just the fire department, but 100% of the city employees have a high morale thanks to his leadership. And Doc, we support you 100%. We appreciate everything you've done, and I think we're excited for the future. I think bringing this vote forward tonight kind of pulls the rug out from everybody that's worked so hard to move things forward and it gives them doubt for moving forward and everything they've worked so hard to do. I, I think Commissioner Lully's decision, great idea. Work together, figure out where your faults are together, because we all, you all have different personalities, and so does he. And honestly, in the corporate world, when you think about it, it's all about personalities and we got to work through it. And I encourage you guys to do that, and I really hope you do. And again, thank you, Doc.
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Santiago. She has done a wonderful job for her area. I want to suggest to you guys to have meets more often. Get together every two weeks. None of you know what each other's doing, and that's wrong. You should all know what each other's doing. I want to thank you so much for cleaning up my neighborhood. I want to thank you so much for the book that you sent out. I thank you for caring. I've been here since 1999, and it used to be pristine, it used to be beautiful, and now there's trucks, RVs, boats, all over the place that are not supposed to be there, and they need to be cleaned up, too. And I really want to thank you, and I hope you stay forever, because you're the only one that has ever done anything since 1999, except for there's a John, and he's passed away. But you're the only other one that's done anything, and I thank you so much. And I want to apologize for my clap earlier, because all this was so negative, and then one came out joyful, and that's why you got excited, because you were joyful. And I want to thank you for trying to bring in good stuff to Deltona, to make Deltona a city, to make Tona, we don't have to go to Sanford or Altamont Springs or Deland for restaurants. We can find our restaurants here, and I want to thank you so very much for all you've done. And I really recommend you guys get together, because this has been a mess. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathy Bryan, Deltona. Apparently, the manager is not the Messiah, nor is he the devil incarnate. Trust and communication go hand in hand, and obviously, there's been a severe, severe breakdown. And that's not just between the manager and the commission, but the residents as well. And I know as much as you guys hate to have us, you know, you keep wanting to push us aside. We do have good ideas, et cetera, and honestly, it's also about optics. And optics, unfortunately, you know, is what people see. And from all that we could see, you were going out and around the commission for things. There is no excuse for not knowing policy. If you start a new job, what's one of the first things you're going to do on orientation? You're going to read all their policies, you're going to read the rules, you're going to learn how to do the job. So there's, there's not an excuse for not knowing that. Just like we, you know, we have our golden books to go by the rules, so I understand where that came from. I'd like to thank Commissioner Lully for the idea to do that. I mean, that's probably the most brilliant thing ever. Make sure residents are included and are allowed to speak freely on that. I hear from a lot of people that, you know, the responsiveness to the public and all that you're getting done. It seems to me like what you guys need to do at this work session is to work on how communications are going to get better between you guys and him, and you guys, and him, and us. Because there's a lot of things that are going on. You just spealed out hundreds of stuff that's been going on, but we don't hear about it necessarily through normal channels, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I agree with Kathy, and I was going to say something totally different when I signed up, but with the way everything's turned, I want to thank Nick for coming up with that idea. I think that's the way to go. You all got an email from me, so you all know how I feel about this at this point, even though the mayor's the only one that answered me. But in any case, I think it would be detrimental to our city to lose Doc at this point. We need to play the hand that we were dealt. We need to work together, all of you. It was the same thing with the last commission. There was so much infighting, and you need to put personal agenda aside and work for the city. Because I do believe that you care, you do, but it's too much petty stuff going on. It's just nuts. And I do think Doc needs to communicate a little better. That's a thing that he and I have had. But it's not all one-sided. When you can't communicate with somebody, it's usually both sides are not listening. And so I don't think that's only on him. I think it's on you, too. And I think that you need to remember, you're his boss. So if he's doing something that he shouldn't or you don't want him to, you need to direct him differently. You need to hold him accountable. That's what we have checks and balances for. And you also have to remember that you guys were elected by us, and you need to start listening to us and, like Kathy said, make us more aware. There's a lot of great things that, that have been done, that I come to these meetings and I still don't know about it. I read the pages, I read your website, and there was a lot of stuff that I don't know about. So you guys need to get better about keeping us informed of all the great things going on. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Commissioner, City Manager, Mayor, Matthew Shaw, Deltona. I was a part of the first graduating class of Deltona University, and it was great. Learned a lot about Deltona. But let me begin by saying thank you, Commissioner, at least the ones that were here, for making a great decision on bringing the city manager in. But now some of you want to reverse that decision, and really, I want to ask why. No one here said that Doc is failing due to poor employee morale or widespread public complaints. In fact, even Commissioner Villa Vasquez acknowledged that from what she's seen and heard, he's doing a great job. Commissioner Lully, the motion you made, very wise. Appreciate that. But what I'm hearing instead are personal frustrations. How many I's was it? There was a lot of I's. I, I, I. Nobody said anything about the constituents. It was all I. I heard, "You're usurping our power." Right? So this feels more like a power struggle than a performance issue. And that's troubling, because it puts the stability of our city at risk over personality conflicts and not performance. I'm also deeply concerned about the proposal to reduce the city manager's spending authority from $50,000 to $25,000.
Mr. Shaw, that's a different topic.
Okay, all right, I won't, I won't, okay. So, all right, I won't say that. So I think this is a waste of time, energy, and a lot of taxpayers' dollars to put the city in a tailspin when you hear all the accomplishments that Doc has done. So a lot of times, we're thinking, is it more just about a power thing, or is it about the city getting better? Employees came up here to back up Doc. I think that says a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Can I sit back here as resident David Santiago, also the, probably the old-timer along with Pat, even though she's got a few years on me. But I sit back here and I reflect back to November, when most of you got sworn in. And it was a very proud moment in this room, a lot of excitement about which way this commission was going to take us, and a lot of positivity. I'd ask all of you to reflect back on that day, and let's see if we can turn back the time and start working together from that day forward. I'm saddened to see the, the infighting that's happening. It's not good for anyone. I've been here 35 years. I've had the opportunity to work with every city manager that's come through here, every single one. And Doc, I have to say this, you're probably the second best, because Fritz Baring was the best. You've got a long way to go there. And none of them were perfect, including Fritz Baring. But I think Matt Shaw, probably his comments regarding, there may be some just power struggles that are happening, and alls I ask is, let's just get back to the basics, guys. You know, as elected officials, we're going to lose sometimes. We're not going to get everything we want when we advocate up there. And I've, I've talked to many of you, and I said, when you take your loss, move on to the next subject. Learn from what just happened, try to get better, work with the staff, and try to come back another day, but don't take the issue out on each other. I'm just more advocating for peace, healing. Nick, your, Commissioner, sorry, your suggestion is a good one, maybe to just kind of have a off-site meeting, like you said, and, and just start it as a healing process. I think the community does not want to see this city manager go away. I think these issues that I've seen and heard are fixable, and I encourage you all, not only to fix this, fix each other, please. It's good for the community. And remember, the unspoken majority that doesn't often come to this room, you represent them, and there are 99,996 of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's hard to follow the ethically challenged. You know, I've been doing this a long time. And he's right, I've seen a lot of managers come and go, but I've also seen a lot, a lot of commissioners come and go. Some of them couldn't even stay up there for their whole term. They got so frustrated with the system and with what they have to deal with up there. You know, I've always made this not about a person, but about a position. When I address the mayor, I address him as Mr. Mayor. When I address the commissioner, it's a commissioner. But what I've seen the last two meetings here, it's been personal. We don't need a lawyer up on the dais. We don't need to be cross-examined all other, of the people. We don't need to think that you know everything, because you don't. At the end of the day, what this truly comes down to, to me, is the fact that we have a lack of communication sometimes from him. We have a lack of communication sometimes from you. Everybody knows that for the last 12 years, I've asked for one big thing, to have an open, transparent government. And you know, I've never seen it. I don't think I ever will, because there's always something that we can't talk about. Why? What is such a big deal about having open and transparent government? Is it really that hard? I don't think it is. Now, I've communicated with him a couple times through email. Other times, I've emailed him, never heard a word back, but I can say the same thing for all of you up there. And it's a shame. What this should have been about tonight is you, not him, but I also didn't need the 30 minutes of his tirade there either.
Thank you.
Lindsay Briones, Franklin, Tennessee, Deltona, Florida. It hurts hearing a lot of negative things about you constantly, doesn't it? It hurts, and it sucks. A lot of the attacks that some of you guys have been getting, I've gotten for the last year and a half, some by the very people up here on this dais. I hope you will take the constructive criticism that everybody up here, whether they like you or not. I hope you listen. I really do. And I hope you, as a dais, actually listen to the constituents, because for the last couple months, it's been god-awful. The actions that have been taking place for the last two years on this dais forced me and my family to leave, and a lot of it had to do with you. A lot of it. So I wanted to tell you thank you for forcing me to do better, forcing me to work harder, and forcing me to get out, because I no longer have to deal with the conniption that is going on with the city. In my new area, somebody actually posted a video of one of the commission meetings from last week, not last week, the last one that was just had, and all I could do was sit there and shake my head. You guys have got to stop fighting with each other, and you guys have actually got to work together, because people are tired. I wish you guys the best of luck. I wish you the best of luck. Take care of yourselves. It's been a great 40 years. Take care.
That is public comment.
All right, at this time, everyone has spoken at least twice. We're going to go ahead and vote. If I can please, just for lack of clarity, can I please have you reconfirm the motion and, go ahead, gentleman, Torshivya.
This is a motion, and Commissioner Lully, you can stop me anytime. This is a motion to conduct an off-site, publicly noticed, Sunshine work session in which the items that fall under the vote of no confidence and the, and the evaluation, evaluations will be addressed. The logistics will be finalized, the legal part will be finalized with us. We're not going to book the conference room for you, but we will work with the manager and his staff to ensure that it is set up certainly in accordance with Sunshine, with working in recognizing that some of, that some commissioners, you got to say this last part.
In acknowledging that, that some commissioners have recognized issues that they would like to address within that workshop to move us forward.
Okay, so there was a motion by Commissioner Lully, seconded by Vice Mayor Harriet, if we can please vote. And I'm sorry, Joyce, I know that's a whole lot of stuff, but. This, this is not for a vote of no confidence, just for the ones that are reading it. That's, I don't think she can type that fast, I'm sorry.
The yes, the, the.
Yes, so motion passes seven to zero for the, for the workshop. All right, let's go. All right, we're going to go ahead and move over to Section 6A, which is fiscal year 2024 audit discussion. Will please have our presenters come to the podium.
Can we give everybody a moment to leave that was here for that?
Sure, would, would the commission be okay with like a two-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and take about a two-minute break, please.
You good?
Yep.
Purvis Gray.
Okay.
And I will both be doing it.
I was going to get out.
Are you tonight, sir?
What's that?
By the time we get there.
Depends on how much time they spend on the next two miles.
I know. I think you're just...
That's right.
All right, we're going to get started in about a minute. So PIO can time it, please. All right, let's go ahead and get started back with the commission meeting, the special commission meeting, please. The presenters can start coming up to the podium, or, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McKinley.
Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing Tim Westgate and Lori Walker, your auditors with Purvis Gray. They're going to be presenting this evening the audit results for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024.
So, good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We did attempt a few weeks ago, but that meeting was delayed, so we're joining you this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to present and serve as your auditors. Just on reintroductions real quick, my name is Tim Westgate, audit partner with Purvis Gray. Lori Walker is the supervisor on your audit engagement. Just touching quickly, this is the final step in the audit process for the year ended September 30th, 2024, and it does meet your external financial reporting requirements that fall under Florida statute, rules of the Florida Auditor General, the secondary bond market in which you participate, your Florida DEP loaned and audit requirements under that, as well as your federal and state grant requirements. So this external audit meets those requirements. I do like to highlight, besides those requirements, the city does choose to participate in the GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers Association, Certificate of Achievements in Excellence in Financial Reporting. And under that, the city goes above and beyond just those legal requirements for an audit and financial reporting under the statutes and whatnot that I mentioned. And in the spirit of transparency and additional disclosure, they participate in the program to receive that award. The city has received it for many years in the past and we anticipate this year's will as well. So we commend your leadership and management's effort in receiving that award. What you mainly want to hear from your auditors, though, is the results of the audit. So not to run through the entire 200-and-some-page document, so just touching on the highlights and an opportunity for questions that you may have. The main report that we issue is the auditor's report on the financial statements and the notes. In that report, it has various reminders, such as the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to provide an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit. Very pleased to say that we issued an unmodified opinion, that is a clean opinion, highest level of assurance that you can have on audited external financial statements. As part of our audit, that second bullet point on there, that second section on there, we conducted the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And as part of those requirements, it requires that we look at internal control for the purpose of designing our audit, but not for providing an opinion on internal control. So as we're designing our audit, we look at internal control related to financial reporting. And if we encountered items that we determined to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, or if we encountered items that were, would be non-compliance with contracts, statutes, grant agreements, that would be material to the financial statements, we would report those to you. Pleased to say it is a clean report, that does not have reported items such as material weaknesses in it. So again, commend your leadership as commission and the city as a whole. Some additional reports that fall under the Florida statutes is a compliance with the Florida Statute 218415, and that is compliance with the statute of investment of public's funds. That as well is a clean report, there were no non-compliance issues in that. Final letter that is in the package is the management letter that is required under rules of the Florida Auditor General, and it would talk about items such as deteriorating financial condition or financial emergencies, those being cases where the city wouldn't be able to make payroll, wouldn't be able to pay their bonds as they come due, or just years of deteriorating and decline. The letter would report those such items. Pleased to say there are no such items in those letters. Outside of the requirements of Florida statutes, the city does receive federal awards, federal grants, and of course, when you accept those funds, they come with additional strings and compliance requirements along with them. As part of the audit requirement, you exceeded the threshold and a federal single audit was required. Through that process and a risk assessment, we identify what your major programs are for the year. In this case, we looked at the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, as well as disaster grant public assistance. As part of selecting those major programs, we look at the compliance requirements and make sure that you complied. Pleased to say, it is a clean opinion as well, an unmodified opinion, that the city did comply with those requirements. So like to commend the city effort in that as well. A few things that we like to touch on each year is just talking about significant events and financial highlights, just to continue those discussions. Like to point out that each of these major funds, these are some of the major funds of the city, each had a positive increase in fund balance. Total fund balance of the general fund landing at 78 million, that is following 10 years, 10 or more years of an increase in fund balance. This has been a significant discussion that we've had for many years in meeting the recommendations of the Government Finance Officers Association, not just in your ability to meet cash flows, but your ability to plan for and be prepared for future projects. Or should you encounter any pandemics, anything like that, hurricanes, of course, were in Florida being more likely in our area. So we encourage you to continue those efforts of continuing to increase your fund balance and maintain those positive positions. Sorry, been a long evening without water. Next page, still major funds. The Water and Sewer Fund also had an increase, a positive increase in net position and maintains a strong working capital. So we, again, we commend your efforts and the good management of that fund. Employee Retirement Fund is the last fund area that we're going to touch on. That had an increase in net position of 7.8 million with a ending balance of 52 million. That is a funded position of 86%. Just for comparison, the funding position in the prior year was about 75.8%. So you had, you know, a pretty significant increase. Good investment performance was the largest driver behind that with the investment decision. So a very strong funding position for that fund. I feel guilty. I feel guilty. Thank you, thank you. I do appreciate that, so there is kindness for sure in the world. Other audit matters to talk about, I wanted to follow up, as mentioned this evening, the IRS Form 1095-C filings. Those were the filings related to certain health benefit information that was delinquent in filing by the city during the 23 audit. It was noted that the IRS notice has been received, that was reported as a non-compliance, material non-compliance in last year's report. So just following up on that, pleased that working with the assistance of an outside specialist attorney, as well as your attorney group, all of that was able to be resolved. And that liability, of course, was reversed and is not recorded in the current year. We do have some recommendations that fall below that threshold of being findings, significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, but still items that we think the city could benefit from overall. And we've discussed these with management already as well, one being the period and closing routine. We are a little bit later in the process in presenting. Of course, you had turnover within the department, leading to that loss of institutional knowledge, the time that was required to redevelop procedures and issue the financial statements. So we encourage the city to continue in those efforts in refining that financial reporting process to get back on the timely cycle. Again, pleased to say, everything ended up, just took, everything ended up with a clean report, just took longer to get there and gather that information. New accounting standard coming, was implemented during the year, related to accounting changes and error corrections, so you will see a disclosure in there where funds changed from major to non-major. That is just related to the adoption of the new standard, nothing alarming in that regard. Last item, just to touch on, as part of the financial statement audit, we do look at internal control related to IT. Not that that is the focus of our financial audit, but in the world we're in, that is very likely for many entities to be a significant financial risk if you had such things, such as ransomware attacks and whatnot. So with that, we have a recommendation, as well as a recommendation of our own, as well as related to the Florida Cybersecurity Act, that the city have an IT risk assessment program put in place. So we do recommend, and that has been discussed with management. So that doesn't directly relate to our audit, but just something we came across during the audit process that we thought would be worthwhile of communicating. So with that, I do want to quickly thank the city for the opportunity, city staff, very cooperative throughout the process, Mrs. Hayes, Mr. McKinney, finance department particularly, who has to put up with us when we say, show us this, explain that. We do get very good cooperation and communication in the process. So with that, I will invite any questions that you have related to the audit.
Yeah, since somebody's on the board, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Did you guys notice any discrepancies?
As far as audit adjustments, is that what you're, do you recall audit adjustments? Yeah, I don't think there were audit adjustments. There were some change in disclosures, just to make sure things were clear, but that's, you know, nothing unusual.
Okay, I guess that was my better question, was that anything out of the norm?
Right.
Any reason to make any of you believe that someone's altering the books for the city?
There is not. We would report, that would be in the reports, if there was.
And that would also not allow us to qualify to get a one and only audit from the Federal Credit.
Yeah, we probably would have walked away. We would be done.
Rightfully so.
Right, we'd leave before that time. And which we do, not here, I'm just saying that, that does really happen. There are audits we walk away from.
I think my biggest question, my biggest concern that I've gotten from residents that said, Mayor, they're going to do a presentation, can you ask, is the city in any financial problems, trouble, constraints? Should we, as a dais, be concerned that we're going to go bankrupt in the next 10 years? I don't know, whatever is the norm for that question.
Right, so if I may, I certainly recognize that question, obviously don't have the crystal ball.
Sure, of course.
And there is a deficit that happens in accounting, in the accounting world, and with an audit, we tend to be historians. So we're telling you, you know, we're agreeing to September 30th, 24, and looking backwards. Based on that information, however, we would be looking for deteriorating financial conditions if we saw trends that are heading in that direction. Just one, because it's the right thing to do. Two, as well, rules of the Florida Auditor General would require that we tell you about that, and there's nothing like that in the reports.
So you don't see any trends indicating that?
There is not.
Okay.
As well, the Florida runs similar trends. They sort of follow our trail and input your financial results, and they would as well highlight trends and you'd be getting letters.
Thank you. Now we got two commissioners, Commissioner Howington and then Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, we wouldn't be a going concern at that point, given that we are financially stable at this point in time.
Right, yes, for sure, but even before that, they would start waving the flag, long before, long before that, right?
So there's been discussion, and I did meet with you a couple of weeks ago.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for meeting with me. Can you please help our residents understand the difference between, say, a forensic audit, a compliance audit, and a financial audit?
Sure will. If I jump into, was that, sorry to interrupt.
You have the floor.
We discussed that a little bit as well, but just for the audience as a whole, you know, individuals who may be listening, audit means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. If the IRS is showing up at my door for an audit, I'm going to panic, like that is not, but that's not what we're doing here. The audit term that is used here is related to financial reporting, and it is strictly related to your financial statements. So it does not include a forensic audit. A forensic audit would typically have a particular area that you are addressing or after your particular clues, and with that guidance, you are trying to target something that has been flagged or identified, and you are after that in a particular area. A compliance audit, of course, you're looking, and there is some compliance elements, like the investment one that I mentioned, there are some pieces in there. A compliance audit as well is directed more towards compliance with a particular set of criteria. This finding... This fin, this audit is related to your external financial reporting requirements, and it is strictly set for the reporting that the city is required to do under generally accepted accounting principles, which is put out by the GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board. They tell you how should things be reported, what is the acceptable criteria, and that applies to all entities within the United, all governmental entities within the United States. So, this audit looks through a method of sampling and analytics, looking at internal control for designing our audit, but again, that's not the main goal. Ultimately, our goal is to report to the state of Florida, to the Florida Auditor General, those bond agencies and whatnot that I mentioned, that we agree that the financial statements truly represent what happened for that year ended September 30th, 2024, and it doesn't go beyond that. So, that is the goal of that audit. So, could be a very long discussion, a whole semester or more in a classroom, trying to bring it down, which I know you're familiar with, many are familiar with for many years, but trying to bring it back into that realm.
So, just because we do have a forensic audit and a compliance audit on the agenda tonight, if we want to ensure that finances are being spent the way that we expect them to, per policy ordinance, would this audit have been sufficient to determine that, based on areas of concern identified by the commission, this audit would have identified?
It, it would, in the realm of reasonable and material. So, the reasonable and material, that material concept is that an outside user would be influenced in their decision-making. So, the opinion behind it is that in all material respects, the financial statements are truly presented. So, that is, from that perspective, if an outside bond investor in the city's bonds, if they, if the financial statement said something different, and they would change their decision because they were misled, because the information wasn't correct, that would be material. If, and I hate to like speak down of it, but if somebody is stealing pencils from the supply cabinet and, you know, taking them home, and it's not used for business purpose, the bondholder's not going to be influenced by that. So, what that material threshold accounting and the audit standards haven't defined that, sort of one of those, you know it when you see it, as bad as that sounds, but it is in that realm. That materially speaking, they do fairly present the question that you're posing.
And what is our materiality threshold in general? I know it, it varies, but just kind of in general, what is that threshold?
Material, that's, that's hard to identify offhand, and Lori, perhaps you can help me out with it in framing it a little bit. You, each of those funds that I presented, each one is its own entity, per se, and each one has its own materiality. So, the general fund doesn't have the same materiality as the pension fund, so it's different in each of those categories. We, as a firm, tend to be more conservative and use a lower threshold. Florida Auditor General, we've seen in some realm, is as high as 5% of fund balance of an entity. We, as a firm, tend to use a much lower threshold.
So, is it fair to say that spending between $25,000 to $50,000 probably is not considered material in the general fund?
In the general fund, that would not, that would not, I, I would not anticipate that would meet a realm of an individual transaction of sway of materiality.
So, if we did have a problem, that probably would not be highlighted, because it wouldn't be within that materiality threshold.
If, if there was a single transaction, right. In aggregate, it would still be looked at, right?
Thank you.
Right.
Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I just wanted to ask you, Deltona, how does it match up with other peer cities?
In, in which regard? Fund balance, revenue production?
Just, I mean, overall, overall, in, in receiving that, the award, and, and just the whole thing, just.
Okay. Just going off the cuff, just going to run with it a little bit, the, the participation in the, in the award program is optional, and I would not, I would venture that less than 50%, if you were to count small cities, way less than 50% of cities in the state of Florida participate in it. So, it is going above and beyond. The no journal entry is very unique, no audit adjustments. The trend of no audit findings, absent your IRS compliance, that is very unique, does not happen a lot. You do currently have a strong, in my personal view, this is an audit opinion, you do have a strong team in place at the time with a lot of experience. You did utilize a, an external professional firm, Milestone, as well, to help put the financial statements together, which is commendable, for the city to make such decision, especially during the transition, to use their outside expertise to, so beyond us and beyond the city, there was another entity involved in helping put the financial reporting package together, which further led to not having adjustments. I mean, I, I believe they should receive credit as well as part of your process. So, the city is putting extra pieces in place to ensure that transition was a smooth transition.
Thank you very much. And with that said, thank you to our finance director and the team and the city manager for going above and, like you said, going above and beyond. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there any other, no? All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to enter into new business, 7A. If I can please have the city attorney read the requests.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a request for approval to amend the procurement policies and procedures. To reduce the spending authority to anything over $25,000 for any department, must come back to the commission for approval.
Okay, at this time, our entertaining motion, so we can be good discussion.
Make a motion.
Microphone, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Commissioner Caldwell, second by Commissioner Lully, and we have Commissioner Caldwell, you're on the, on the board.
I, I feel it is our duly elected responsibility up here to know what the money's being spent on, in all departments, whether it's budgeted or not. You know, as we were just told up here, anything under $25,000 usually doesn't show up on, on average audit. So, this is my request to see anything over or under 25, over $25,000 for any department comes back to the commission.
Commissioner Santiago, then Commissioner Howington.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I've previously said, and we said it at 50,000 in our previous commission meeting, with the size of this city, we're the largest city in Volusia County, the norm is typically, for this sized city, is 100,000. I believe in, in decreasing it to 25,000 is just going to hinder the process of our employees, it's going to take more time. You know, it does take, it does take time. I've been there, I've worked in the purchasing department. You have to wait, you have to put the paper together, submit it for an agenda item, it's just going to hinder the process at 25,000. I think we should just leave it alone, keep it the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Howington?
Thank you, Mayor. We operated under $25,000 for the past 30 years. Our next agenda item is specifically to determine whether or not we would like to have a forensic and compliance audit. And after the no confidence agenda item that we just had, I think that it's fair to say that we have a lot of trust issues going on at this particular juncture. So, while I understand we just made this change, given the questions that have arisen, and until we have a comfort level, I, I think the $25,000 mark that's been in play for 30 years, until we can get a better comfort level, is sufficient. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you, Mayor. Question on the procedural process, the process around this motion, is this amending the, the purchasing policy that has, we approved a few months ago, or is this going to be a standalone item separate to that policy?
Procedurally, because the procurement policy, the purchasing policy, was adopted via resolution, and staff will need some additional time to go through that guide and make all of the edits, that would need to come back to you. But tonight, you can make a motion to amend that policy and have it be effective immediately, it will just need to be formalized via resolution and an update of the, the formal document.
Okay, so is that, is that, is the motion that was made tonight clear to accomplish that goal? To make sure that, that it's effective, as the motioner wants it effective, but it's also, we also update, update the resolution?
Hold on, Commissioner, please remember, you have to use the mic.
It's my intention to update the policy tonight.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're not doing this outside of updating the policy. If this is going to take place tonight, then I want to make sure that this also triggers an update of the actual policy resolution as well. That, that being said, like, like one of my fellow commissioners said, that the, the policy has been for the last 25 years, almost, $25,000. I understand, I understand all the points made, I, I, I get it, but, thank you, Mayor.
City manager?
Just for clarity, there's difference, 25 from 50, going back down to 25, but part of that was, and I believe I heard it, just want to correct, anything that's already been budgeted, that we already discussed in September, October, comes back a couple of weeks later to, to ask for permission again. So, everything budgeted, no matter what, is coming back?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, is public comment, please?
David Sosa?
All right. Wasn't sure I was going to make it tonight, so, one thing I do have an issue with is currently, with your agendas, you don't provide the links anymore to anything that's in the discussion. I have an issue with that, because then I have to go and look for it. I'm talking about, about this item right here, because I can't research it correctly. Okay? So, I'm having an issue, you guys put this out there, but you put no information with it, I have to go back and look for it. Now, one thing I do have an issue with is the procurement policy in general, I'm going to have to go from my head from a couple of months ago when you passed it, I think it was on page eight, nine, 10, or 11, you have about 22 exceptions to your policy, where the city manager can spend over 100,000 without even having to come back to you guys. And then there's also an exception in there, that if he did want to come back to you guys, but he can't, then he could go to the attorneys, or he could go to the mayor to get it signed. That was in that policy. I have a question, when did the mayor get more power than U7, or U6 left? That was in that policy. The policy in itself was bad. It should have never been passed in the first place. Given him more money, it doesn't matter, because probably within those 22 exceptions, he doesn't have to come back to you anyways. So, I think you need to go and revisit the whole policy, read it, I understand it's born two pages, but it's something you do have to go and do.
Rob Trumbetta?
I just, I would just ask that, in light of what we've just all been through, some of this seems to be part of this whole struggle between the different sides of, of the issues, and I think, I, I would like you not to do this, keep it at 25, I would say, keep it at 50, and go through your process of your, your kumbaya process, which I hope is successful, and then, then come back and deal with this. I think this just perpetuates this, this nitpick little thing, I mean, 25, 50,000, when you're talking 100 million, my goodness. And a lot of things cost a lot of money when you're dealing with the city, I don't know. I mean, we're not talking about pencils here, we're talking about equipment, stuff that costs, you know, big bucks, and, and then, just add, I would say, just, if you have concerns, I mean, you see what they, eventually, you're going to see what they spent and just say, "Well, what was this $37,000 for?" Or $45,000 for? I mean, but, let's just put all of this, I believe, little checks and little extra checks, because you don't trust people on the side, and let's just try to start all over again anew.
Kathy Bryan?
So, my wallet understands the cost of things these days, but, you know, we're at a point here, I know we've got a, we've got the budget coming up, we're going to be making people unhappy when we start talking about that. Instead of, why don't we split it down the middle? 37.5. If you're talking about 50,000, how many departments do we have? Seven, eight, whatever? So, you reduce it by close to 100,000. I realize that's a pittance, but sometimes, it's the little things that make a difference. And then relook at your policy on the exceptions, et cetera, but maybe you don't have to go one or the other. Thank you.
Albert Bryan?
Reason why we had a limit originally was checks and balances. It's always been about checks and balances. Doesn't matter whether it's in the budget or not. You are supposed to be checking on his balance. We lived through Jane Chung. She thought that a $2 million project that was in the budget, she could spend that $2 million, and it didn't matter what it was on. That's why this $25,000 limit was all about, because we had managers in the past that took advantage of you, the commission. Maybe not you personally, but I lived through that. I watched it, I was here. We watched money go out the door so fast that we couldn't account for it. That's why I became such a budget hawk. That's why I have all the budget books for the last 12 years sitting in my room. I know when people change things where they're not supposed to be. I've seen it too many times. The problem, when you take and change it for nilly-willy reasons, you, you do stuff that are so knee-jerked that it becomes a problem. That's why this has come back now, because y'all have a problem. The communication up there to here, and from there to here, that's a problem. And it's showing so bad, it's embarrassing. When he talks about changing personnel policy because it's under his purview, that's all fine and dandy, except for the fact that in 2021, it was passed by resolution. In order to change that personnel policy, you have to change it again by resolution. And that means y'all voted on it in 2021, the personnel policy. That's the same with this. It was changed by resolution originally. It was changed recently by resolution, and now we're bringing it back, because y'all got scared, you got wet feet. What a shame.
Tara Diargao?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Just, I just wanted to, I, I thought I heard, if it's an item that's in the budget, and has been budgeted, and the budget was approved, but then when that item actually comes where the money's being spent, it would come back up in front of the commission? Okay. So, maybe just think about that, right? Because just to me, and, and obviously, you all are privy to probably more information than what I know and experience, or experiencing things I may not realize, that just seems duplicative. Like if it's, I could see if it's changing, if the amount's changing, or if the intent, or if what it's being spent on is changing, absolutely, that should go up and back it up in front of you all. up in front of you all. But if it's the exact same, it just seems like it's duplicative to bring it back up to approve something that's exactly the same that you already approved. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you all.
That ends public comment.
Go to Commissioner Santiago, Vice Mayor Harriet. And if nobody else is on, we'll go ahead for vote.
I was going to show you the budget book that's approved currently. I don't think I have one. You don't have one, do you? No? That's okay, that's okay. So the budget book, yeah, it's about this big. And it's, we approve it. And everything's in there, in writing, of what has been approved. And all we're asking is for the city manager to get the items that we, we approved processed up to $50,000. Lowering it to $25,000 is just going to be a repetitive waste of time. I understand we want transparency. I'm the first one that wants transparency here, but we also need to know, this is a repeti, it's just going to be repetitive, and it's going to be a waste of time. But that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, then City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On our first item this morning, I thought we did a phenomenal job of coming to consensus together. And I'd like to see if that would be possible on this item. We heard quite a few suggestions from our neighbors, and I think that there's an opportunity here to bring the policy back, and look at multiple components of the policy. With individual components, the threshold is just one component of it. There are also the exceptions that are called out in it, as well as the component of budgeted items not coming back to the commission. So I think that it might be a better option for us to bring the policy back for revisions of the, the policy and, and other aspects of the policy, rather than just the one, the one component, the threshold.
City Manager? And then I'll, I got something.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for context, just want to remind everybody, the neighboring towns are at 75, 100, and 125,000 dollars. That's why their staff originally brought it to you in February and said, we'd like to go to 100, but then it was dropped down to 50. And now we're going back down to 25. So again, other towns are 75, 100 in comparison. And another, just example to go off with, just for clarity, like the Golden Book was originally budgeted at 60,000. It came in at $28,000. This would, we'd be bringing the Golden Book back to the commission, because it's over 25,000, even if it's half the price of what we originally budgeted for. So just for context, that's, that's what we're talking about.
All right. Before, and I, excuse me with my voice, before we move to a vote, just because somebody made a comment on it, and, and I know that they weren't trying to start controversy, they, they just saw it, and they, they thought it was curious. One of those exemptions for the city attorneys, does that contradict language? Because I believe that section where it says that the, the mayor can sign something was, excuse me, was, was added because there was a situation that Marcia literally, two weeks or something like that before commission meeting, they needed us to sign something for one of the emergency management things, and I was adamant about not signing it, because there's a policy that says I need permission from this dius. Correct? Is, is that what the, because if, if, if there's a mix-up, needing that up, that, that needs to happen. Obviously, we kept contradicting things.
Yes, we can certainly double check that language in the policy. I believe the intent is specifically related, related to emergency purchases and items related to FEMA, where the mayor is generally the signatory on behalf of the city and not the city manager. But we can definitely.
And I believe that was the case that day, because I, I ended up having Marcia send me an email stating that it was okay for me to sign that document, because I, the last thing I wanted was to be grilled for the commission for doing something that I explicitly told her, and I had several people there, that I was not allowed to sign that, and she said, well, if you don't sign it, we're going to lose this today. So that, that's where that came from. So let's go ahead, and can we please vote? The motion passes four to three. All right, we're going to go to Section 7B. If I can please have the city attorney read the approval request.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a request for approval of a forensic audit and a compliance audit at the direction of the city commission.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to begin discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Howington.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a forensic audit and a compliance audit. The auditors would report directly to the city commission and have complete unfettered access to city records as necessary to complete the audits.
Second. It was a motion by Commissioner Howington, second by Commissioner Lully. Commissioner Howington, you're on the board.
I hit that for the motion.
All right, Commissioner Santiago, then Vice Mayor Harriet.
How much is this a forensic audit, compliance audit? How much is it going to cost the city? Does anybody know?
Eighty to $100,000.
About 100,000?
Eighty to $100,000. That came from the state of Florida, from the, what is it, the LGA, the Legislative Action Committee, yeah.
Before we move to make that decision, I think it's best that we bring it back, just to make sure what the amount is. Go ahead, if you can.
Commissioner, I did a forensic audit roughly, well, 2017. It was a very small scoped item, and it was close to 100,000 dollars. From what I've heard this evening, this is a much larger scope of what's potentially being asked to be done. So just based on prior experience, it would be far greater than 100,000 dollars.
More than 100,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
I just want to flag procedurally that, due to the, the budget amount and the, the threshold, this would likely need to have direction from the commission as to a scope that would be put out for RFP. That RFP would have to be evaluated and brought back to the commission for a final action. So you could potentially vote to move forward tonight, but there would be multiple steps.
I was going to ask you that.
I have one more question, though. Please. To our auditors that are here, really quick, your question, the city, you just reported seconds ago that we are above and above, above and beyond our legal requirements, as far as auditing standards, the deficiencies. Would you recommend for us to do this audit, forensic audit?
Can you please make sure your, your microphone's on?
There we go. Tim Westgate with Purvis Gray. I'll re-echo what we've recommended to the city in the past, is that you consider an internal auditor. I would venture that if you were to go down the forensic audit realm, you would have to identify your scope, and I would venture that each scope is probably 100,000 dollars. So if you're looking at just revenues in a particular fund, and you have some idea there, that could be 100,000. If you're looking at expenditures in the fund, or if you're looking at, if you're looking at expense reimbursements, if that was your scope, that's another 100,000. You know, so it's in your realm. It would not be, I couldn't imagine a citywide, I mean, I can't, I don't know who would propose on something like that with a very identified scope. I mean, you'd have to identify what the scope is. Again, nothing came to our attention that would lead us to believe that anything's going to be, you know, come out of that process that would be material. Nothing material would come out of that process. But it could exist. First, I recommend, you know, reread the engagement letters, reread the auditor's report. Fraud could happen. We're not saying it didn't happen. I'm also not saying it did. We have no indication of fraud occurring. Fraud is a complex area, where you involve collusion and other aspects. I do echo what was mentioned earlier. You do have an entirely new team in place, new leadership team. Fraud has been thrown around at the city for many, many years. Seems a little outside the concept that fraud would be, can, could have existed, you know, would have existed with the old team, and then a new team came in, and they picked up the fraud and ran with it. I just don't see it at this time, but we'll re-repeat a recommendation of considering an internal auditor, which would report to the commission.
But just to make sure.
That would be as, that's a position. You know, that is a position, and over time, the city could recommend, what, what, what do you want to be looked at? We do see it time to time when there is, it is a just to be sure. We do see it in cities where there is dissension between, you know, commissions and management. And that is a extra layer in there that's optional.
And just to make sure you didn't see anything that's concerning, that we should spend, like you said, could be, depending on the fund or the scope of work, it could go 100,000, 500,000, up to a million dollars possibly?
A recent one that I had conducted was related to some fire fees somewhere, and it was just the fire fees, and just looking at the process of how it was collected, and how the tracking, the reporting process, and the fee was about 50,000. Just to look at that one single element.
One item. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Legal. With the last item that was just passed, and the item, the purchasing threshold reduced to 25,000 dollars, does that mean that we're pretty much regardless, from what I'm hearing, anything, would this be included in that? So if, if this comes back at 100,000 dollars, or 500,000 dollars, that this would then have to come back to the commission?
Yes, that's correct. And the, the direction where I, at least I have understood, is that these auditors would report directly to the commission, you know, in receiving their scope and, and in their reporting. So they would come back regardless of dollar amount.
I, I also want to clarify the process in which this is going to happen. We approved this today. This gets voted on today. If it is approved, then a scope would have to come back to the commission to agree on exactly what is being looked at. And then, from there, I'm guessing it would be put out to an RFP, and then those bids would come back, and this commission would be the selection, would, would we be the selection committee? Or would there be a firm recommended by staff?
The intent is that this is the commission. They report to the commission.
Let's do one edit, guys. Let Legal answer that, please.
So either way, regardless of, if it, if it is approved tonight, there's at least two more times where this would have to come back to the commission?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner Vila Vasquez, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a, first, oh, thank you. I remember last time that we had the audit, the IRS issue was in place. And one of my questions about that was, you only audit financial stuff, but you do not audit policies? That the policy, the way things are done are being followed, and, and the work is being done according to the policies and procedures. Am I correct? So I just wanted to point that out. My question to Commissioner Dory is, would you consider, you know, our auditor's suggestion about doing an in-house audit instead, which would be less expensive for the city?
What I would like to see is, I'd like to see an initial audit, given the fact that residents have had so many concerns over the years, and then follow that up with an internal auditor on staff, once we have a clean starting point.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to public comment, please.
David Sosa?
Should I wait for the mayor to get back? Guess not. All right. One of the things I think needs to be identified, has been said, scope and term. Once again, I was looking at the links, there's no information provided, so it's fairly hard to speak intelligently on this when there's no data out there. I know for a fact, it's probably going to cost well over the 80,000, because Emma, your husband, when he was a state rep, was trying to get an audit of our water department. Unfortunately, he failed to get that, and the city went ahead at the time and did that. It did cost 200,000 for what was supposed to be an audit of the water department, but it ended up just being a study. And it was a waste of 200,000. I think we need to keep it at an audit, and not veer off to a study. So the cost will be more. I think, I'm not sure if I'm correct, but the folks that do the auditing here, do, do you kind of look at more cash-ins versus cash-outs, as opposed to going to itemized listings, to make sure that things are spent where they need to be spent? I think that's an issue we need to have. I, I think part of the problem is, nobody trusts you guys. Nobody trusts him. All right? An issue came back with the purchasing policy, which was brought up a couple of times, was under Jane Chang. There was money going here, money going there. Nobody knew where it was going. Unfortunately, I think we're back to that same thing now, because there's no transparency. I know, Dory, you've been asking for figures from up there for a while. I don't know if you got them yet. Have you? Did you finally get them? Thank you. Good. All right. Way to go. All right. Now, I knew grants are out there, I don't know if you can get them, but we need to look at that. And I think when we look at fraud, we need to define fraud. Is fraud you taking money? Is it him taking money? Or is it just management misspending money? I think that's where we need to define fraud. There needs to be a definition of it. Like, I did a public records request for the mayor's travel expense in March, I got no records found. I did it for this gentleman here, and guess what? His travel expenses were under his credit card. So to me, that's fraud.
Albert Bryan?
Oh, me oh my. There's a reason why we have asked for this audit for quite a few years now. And I mean, quite a few years. It's not about fraud. It's not about anything criminal, as far as we know. It's about keeping books that actually make sense. When I did a PRR for the Rhode Island money, I have three years of audit books that show it under the center. When I got the PRR, they said, no, no, the money is under the Rhode Island fund. So I got curious. I went to the electronic digital budget books. Oh, well, wouldn't you know? It's there. But the paper books that we got show it not there, and actually show that it's under the center for purchasing land. So how could we actually change that without it ever being voted on again? That's why we want an audit. Another reason why we want an audit is because we had the center. We lived through the center. Overbudgeted, and it was crazy. We said it was going to be for this thing, and then it was for that, and then it was for this, and about 2 million of that money should have never been spent on it. But it was. So when we say a forensic audit, we want every number counted. I want every department counted. I want every penny accounted for, from 2022, 2023 fiscal year, 23, 24 fiscal year, 24, 25 fiscal year. It has nothing to do with him. It has to do with the fact that, he said it earlier, we've gone through seven managers in five years. We've gone through how many different financial people now? Four in six years. Give it to us, please.
Jody Lee?
Good evening, Commissioner. You know, this audit, I think almost everybody up there, except for, I believe, Mr. Santiago, I think everybody ran on it at one point in time. Well, we should have an audit in the city. Everybody said it. It just keeps getting put on a back and back, back. I'm not saying he's stealing money. I think the, the money being spent is a little out of hand. I mean, I know a couple, a couple city managers ago, there was, I believe, 100,000 dollars taken out of the emergency, it was supposed to be for emergency services, for sheriff's department, to buy some furniture for two officers. It was 100 grand. It never got spent. But it got moved into the general fund, and that's illegal. And that's illegal, if anybody doesn't know that. It got taken out of the, for impact fees for emergency services, put in general fund. The budget amendment not too long ago, I believe, our city manager put that money back in there, which is a good thing. But purpose, the other, our audit company, they never found that. That was money taken out, not by him, prior, one of the many managers been here. But that was a thing that was found, he fixed the situation. But it was never brought up. And that is illegal. It went to our general fund. These are things that need to be found. Our money spending is out of control. Everybody's been crying about the water department. You don't think the water department needs an audit? How do you get a bill one day and all these different problems with the water billing and everything else? These are things that need to be looked into. And I agree. Everybody ran on audit? Maybe it's finally we get one. Thank you.
Carolyn Hickerson.
I don't know. It just seems like a lot of I gotcha kind of stuff and I don't like it. If you do everything, you're probably looking at a million dollars. That's a lot of money. If you just want just a little bit, I mean, probably looking at $250,000 and you're supposed to be the budget girl. That's a lot of money. I don't like it. I would like the in-house maybe audit, but I don't want to spend out 250,000 to a million dollars for a gotcha. I don't want to do it.
Elizabeth Chavez.
Before Ms. Chavez starts, just so the public knows, I have a sick daughter and Ms. Vasquez has a sick relative as well. So if you see us go back and forth, it's either our voice or we're tending to our family. So just FYI.
Elizabeth Chavez Deltona. I remember that you guys had a meeting and then you had a break for like 20 minutes. And there was about, what was it, I think, 1 million or 1 billion? That was something you had added to the original budget. And then you just, you know, you just were able to take it out. I've heard that we have a healthy economy in our city and I think that an audit is something that I've even asked for up at this podium years ago as well.
That ends public comment.
Okay. I have a couple of questions and I'll go to Vice, Vice Mayor Harriet. Does anybody in staff recall how much the audit that we did on Deltona Water cost us?
200,000.
200,000, you said, Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
200,000.
Okay, $200,000. And that's just on one department? So I know because I was part of that committee and I know you were on the diet at the time. So what, what was this disparity that was found in that, in that audit? I think maybe Mr. Whitcomb can answer that or, or maybe Phyllis, Ms. Wallace, anyone? I mean, if you, if you can't answer it now, that's fine. I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but I like at least an answer by the next time this comes back up because if my memory serves me right, the disparity that was found was extremely so minimal that it was literally a waste of 200,000 dollars. I'm not saying we, but my biggest thing that I've ran on is an operational audit, completely different. We have auditors here saying that we're in good financial strains. Operational audit, 100%. I've always, I've always, I've always literally requested that. Fortunately, even with the past commission, I never got it. I have a very good question for, not that anybody else's wasn't, but maybe the auditors can answer this and I'm sorry we keep picking on you, but since you're here, we're going to take advantage of you. Would, would it be more cost-effective to have this commission send a letter to the Florida Doge team and request that they audit us? Would that be more cost-effective than spending $100,000 on each department?
Cost-wise, being Doge, being new, don't know what it would look like or what they may choose to charge the city for. OIG, I believe, with the state of Florida, they could come in and with legislature direction, do their own audit. Typically, they will more likely come in if they're really called in and they'll just send the bill to whatever city or entity had requested that, if they even choose to come at all. So they theoretically may do it, but if they follow the model of the OIG, they would send a bill for the work that they're doing. So as far as staying, I asked for the trouble, I stayed around this evening of my own choice, really, because I do serve at the pleasure of the commission, just wanted to be available.
Because my, my question is, I saw, for example, I, I saw this on the, obviously on our agenda and I reached out to a couple of county commissioners in Lake County and asked them, because I know Lake County was, I believe, the first county in the state that asked for that. I, he hasn't responded on the cost, but the assumption is, is because the state is trying to get that up and running, it would be a lot cheaper than us trying to audit every single department in, in, in the city, right? And I think that they would probably, just because probably trying to find something, they would find something, right? Do you think that would be a more effective route to go?
So it might be a route, might be a route to go. A lot of the questions that seem to come up and another gentleman used similar language that the question might be more about efficiencies and effectiveness of the spending more than accuracy of the spending. You know, the financial statement audit is focused on the accuracy and does not talk about effectiveness and efficiency. Doge or something like that, that is the goal of that type of project.
Because that would essentially look at operation as well, which I believe Commissioner Vila used a different name for it, which is like our policies and procedures. So, okay, that's just a point that maybe Commissioner Howington, if you're willing to, to consider that instead of the other. After we go through Vice Mayor and Commissioner Vila Vasquez, that, that's something that I would like us to consider as well. Vice Mayor Harriet, then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. With all the conversation we've had with hearing from residents, I think that, that this will address, is the first step to addressing a lot of, a lot of concerns that we consistently hear from our neighbors. But to that end, I would, would, am very interested to hear what the, the next conversation is that we have regarding the scope and then after that, the budget. One of the things that I will have challenges with is if this comes back and it is exceedingly costly to the point where we're, we're giving up park improvements, fire station improvements, you know, we're talking about miles of sidewalk that, that we're giving up in order to do something like this. So that being said, I, I think that I've heard all of our neighbors and absolutely support this being a step to, to kind of build that trust. So, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify that that audit, that audit, water audit that was done was not requested by the commission. It was requested by a self-made organization that accused the water department of fraud. And I think that's how it came about. Like you say, you were in the, and some of people in the audience were also on that committee. So that did not come from the commission, the request, but the expense did. Just wanted to put it out there.
Okay. So nobody's else on the board. We already have public comment. Can we go ahead and, and vote on the motion? And this still has to come before us twice, correct?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't think Commissioner answered Vice Mayor's question.
I think we can hash all that out during the scope. The first thing is to get the commitment to move forward with an audit.
You want to put a timeframe on it? I would appreciate if we could put something on.
Please use your mic, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I would like it if we could put a timeframe on it, 90 days, 120 days, whatever we think is appropriate, but that, that way I just know personally that when you give direction open-ended, we are inviting things to fall through the cracks.
Absolutely. How long would it take to do an RFP, get the scope set for us, all of that? Because that's a question that I'm going to have to direct towards the city manager, given that he's going to be in charge of doing that.
Yes, sir. Once I have a scope, two to three weeks to put the RFP package together, then something of this magnitude, we would want to put it out there for no less than 30 days. Then based on the number of respondents, like, for example, I just got the insurance RFP. It's a box this thick of everything. So that's, that's two weeks for us to review it before we then meet as an evaluation committee. And something like this, then you're also going to want to have one-on-one, you know, evaluations with them where the firms come and give a, you know, a presentation to the evaluation committee. Then it's talking about who's on the evaluation committee. So then every one of those, if it's the commission, would also have to be publicly noticed because you're the commission. You know, so you're looking, in my opinion, based on something like this, on a normal auditor, RFP is three months. You're probably looking at at least five months because of the complexities, once I get the scope from the commission.
Maybe it's better to do this step by step?
I was just going to say, would it be better to do a date certain tiered approach? Saying that we would like to have the scope within 30 days, the RFP within another 30 days, that would put us at 60 days, then would you prefer that?
I think that that is reasonable. I do want to flag that I believe that the commission would need to provide direction on the scope. So likely we would need to have a workshop discussion where that, perhaps based on kind of a skeleton draft, the commission can provide that direction and then give staff additional time to refine and put that together before it goes out on the street. So your first step may be scheduling a workshop.
45 days to schedule a workshop. Sorry, I think maybe 45 days to schedule a workshop and get commission input, initial commission input. And then I think it might be best to, instead of trying to identify all the future dates, we just work one, one step at a time.
We could initially start it with 120, but that we need to start with the scope and the RFP process in a tiered stage. How would you recommend that we word that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just so you know, so finance has indicated that because, you know, we have all these budget workshops coming up and obviously we're deep in budget season, they'd prefer to do this workshop at the end of August. And ideally, you all could come to the workshop with the list of what you want. So again, if this is going to answer to you and be yours, you need to take ownership and give that list because it's yours. So I would urge you to take this time, put together your list, bring it to the workshop and, I mean, ideally then we could put it all together into the RFP and then staff could, I mean, John, I don't want to speak for you, but then.
I mean, absolutely. I mean, just as a point of reference, when we're doing a normal audit, which as Tim said, very high level, it takes six months from the start of, you know, interim to completion of field work and all of the reports. So just to do the work for a, a normal city audit is six months. Anything faster than that will require a significant, and I'll do whatever I'm asked to do, I promise. But that's a significant staff time just from finance because everything on this will come from finance, contracts, expenditures, revenues, policies, you know, travel policies, purchasing policies, then we're changing the policy. So then, you know, we've got to look at all the different dates that the policy changed because that pendulum switched every time the policy changed. So if we go back to 2022, there's been significant changes in policies and procedures during that time. So I can absolutely get before you a firm to do the audit within no more than five months, no questions asked. So now we're looking, you know, November.
That's 150 days.
That firm would be on place. Then you've got to give some time because if we do ask for it to be completed, and I'm just saying this, in 90 days or less, now you're talking about they're starting it in November and we're in the middle of doing our normal audit in December through the end of February. So these fine individuals behind me can come in and do the, you know, the field work, you know? So there's only so many people in finance. And that's all I'm asking is for consideration. I'll do anything asked, bar none. But it's a significant ask.
So how would you recommend that we do the date certain on that?
I think the best motion is likely a motion to have a workshop regarding the, a workshop to generate the scope for an RFP to procure in, a forensic audit and compliance audit that will respond to the city commission, have that workshop posted at the end of August and for the award of the RFP to come before the commission within as soon as reasonably possible, to be no later than five months from the date of the workshop.
I would amend that to be the date the scope is finalized. Because the hope is that at the workshop you finalize, but you all may, may say, we want this to come back to a meeting, we want to vote, we want pub, I mean, there could be a host of, so I should, I would say from finalization.
And I love DemandStar, so I have no problem pulling down data of similar scopes of audits like this so that that can be provided to assist the commission in narrowing the scope.
And I'm, I'm okay with amending it to that, as Zach stated with Jim.
I'm fine with that, with the second.
Okay. Motion passes six to one. Can I get a motion to extend the meeting?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
How long do you want to extend the meeting, Commissioner Vila?
Uh, let's do 20 minutes.
Okay. All right, simple vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, anybody opposed? Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started with section 7C. If I can please have the city attorney, this is a long one, so hopefully you've been rested. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 29-2025, an ordinance of the City of Deltona, Florida, providing for imposition of a temporary moratorium on issuance of development orders and permits and on the processing of development applications, city code text amendments, rezonings, comprehensive plan text and land use plan amendments for development of residential dwelling units within the city, exempting specified development, providing for waivers, providing for vested rights, providing for appeals, providing for exhaustion of administrative remedies, providing for a term not to exceed nine months unless extended by the city commission as provided by law, providing for conflicts, severability and an effective date.
All right, Jordan. Can I get a motion at this time so we can start conversation?
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, let's.
I hereby move to approve ordinance number 29-2025 at first reading.
Now you can make your second. Commissioner Caldwell, with the mic on, please.
Second.
I'm going to make a practice. Go ahead, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Tonight we are presenting ordinance 29-2025, which proposes a temporary moratorium on certain residential development activities within the City of Deltona. The proposed duration is up to nine months and is intended to give the city time to evaluate and address infrastructure and policy concerns related to continued residential growth. This slide frames the approach. So what is the problem we're trying to identify? How is this moratorium connected to it? And what do we hope to solve during this pause, during this moratorium? To be legally defensible, a moratorium must meet a two-pronged test. Number one, it should serve a legitimate public interest such as protecting infrastructure. And number two, it must be proportional and limited in scope and time. I'm now going to turn it over to Legal and they'll go over some laws and judicial decisions.
Thank you. So the next few slides will just be an overview of some relevant law and judicial decisions that you may hear mentioned in tonight's discussion, either amongst each other, staff or from the public. So the first is the Burt J. Harris Property, Private Property Rights Protection Act. Most people call this the Burt Harris Act. And. And this is a statutory scheme that provides a right for recovery and compensation to any property owner damaged by a specific action of a governmental entity that has inordinately burdened an existing use of real property or a vested right to a specific use of real property. So under the statute, inordinate burden or inordinately burdened means that an action of one or more governmental entities has directly restricted or limited the use of a real property, such that the property owner is permanently unable to attain reasonable investment-backed expectation for the existing use of the real property, or a vested right to a specific use of that real property with respect to the real property as a whole, or that the property owner is left with existing or vested uses that are unreasonable, such that the property owner bears permanently a disproportionate share of a burden imposed for the pub, for the good of the public, which in fairness, should be borne by the public at large. The act further goes on to state that temporary impacts to a real property in effect for one year or less do not constitute an inordinate burden. So I will repeat that again. A temporary impact for a term less than one year is not considered an inordinate burden under the act. And that is very important as we move forward with this discussion, and as you all have already provided direction, for this to be a term of nine months, or a term not to exceed nine months, you are well within that threshold for this not providing in, providing for action under the Burt Harris scheme. The next slide here is First English Evangelical Lutheran Church versus Los Angeles County. This is a Supreme Court case out of California that informs the case law regarding takings in a temporary situation. So in the facts of this case, in 1957, a church purchased land on which it operated a campground and retreat. The campground was located alongside the, a canyon which housed a dry riverbed for the banks of Mill Creek. In 1978, a storm dropped 11 inches of water throughout the watershed, which caused a raging river to sweep through this canyon and swept away buildings at both the church's site and throughout the area, causing great damage. As a direct result of the flood, Los Angeles County adopted an interim ordinance that prohibited the construction of any building in the interim flood protection areas, including the church's property. The church filed suit, and upon review at the Supreme Court level, the court held that the land owners were entitled to damages for the temporary taking. So this just provides a, some relevant case law regards to temporary deprivation of land use, and the, this stands for the proposition that compensation may be due under certain circumstances when all use of it, of land is deprived even for a temporary period. The next piece here as well is a 2002 informal Attorney General opinion issued by Assistant Attorney General Jocelyn Wilson. This was an inquiry that came from the City of Cape Coral, who, which was seeking guidance on the imposition of a temporary moratorium ordinance for their city. The question posed was whether during the inaction period, the time between public notice, first reading, second reading, and final adoption, whether applications for development could be held, could be stayed during that implementation period, and that was answered in the negative, that the city could not hold the intake of applications until the final adoption hearing of the, the ordinance. So that just is some additional guidance for you all, additional case law for you all tonight, which will bring us into Deltona's proposed moratorium.
So now we will discuss what this moratorium will look like. So the purpose and scope of the moratorium, the moratorium targets new residential development applications, including rezonings and plan amendments for residential unit, for residential uses, excuse me. The pause will allow the city to analyze capacity and service impacts from growth and recommend adjustments where needed. In terms of legal authority, the action is fully within the city's authority under the Florida Constitution in Chapters 163 and 166, which allow municipalities to regulate land use in the interests of public health, safety, and welfare. What is the stated basis for this moratorium? The city has seen significant residential development pressure in recent years. Public infrastructure, such as roads, utilities, and emergency services, is struggling to keep pace, and this moratorium will provide time to evaluate and ensure that development aligns with community needs and infrastructure capacity. What are the goals during this moratorium? Staff will continue to conduct a citywide infrastructure assessment. Staff will continue to update land use policies and zoning to ensure smart and sustainable growth. And staff will continue to explore policies for infill development, infrastructure funding, and future growth management. Now, this moratorium does include exemptions, which is in the ordinance in front of you. The moratorium does not apply to commercial, industrial, office, or school projects, projects on city-owned or CRA-owned land, projects with approved site plans or plaits prior to June 30th, and any approval or permits related to prior entitlements, and specific projects identified in Exhibit A of the ordinance. And at your seat is, there's an updated Exhibit A. The only change is at the bottom, there's a little asterisk for Option B, which is for Halifax, and it's Option B is continued upon the second reading and adoption of ordinance So with this moratorium, the commission may adjust the nine-month duration. They can consider exemptions for infill residential or mixed-use projects, and they can provide direction for any changes or clarifications before second reading. The Planning and Zoning Board met earlier today at 4:30, and during their special meeting, they reviewed ordinance 29-2025. The board voted four to three to recommend approval of the ordinance with the inclusion of the three key refinements. Number one, exempt infill residential development for single-family homes to allow continued investment in underutilized lots within established neighborhoods. Number two, exempt mixed-use developments that include fewer than six residential units per acre and contain less than 30% residential use in the overall project to support low-impact economically balanced growth. And number three, add a provision for automatic sunset of the moratorium in the event that Senate Bill 180 is signed into law by the governor to safeguard the city against retroactive invalidation and legal exposure.
And that brings us into just a final slide on legislative risk, Senate Bill 180. As you are all aware, this has passed the state legislature and is now pending signature or action by the governor. In the event that it is passed into law, it would have a statewide impact, including Deltona, that would prohibit a new local development restrictions with a retroactive date of Octo, August 1st, 2024, and moving forward to October 1st, 2027. So this would serve to invalidate the moratorium should it be enacted. And the risk to the city is that impacted parties can seek to invalidate these local ordinances that are contrary to the intent of SB 180, and if successful, they could recover attorney's fees and costs. This is just making you all aware of the potential. This is not intended to scare you in any way. This is just ensuring that you are all aware of the risk should this legislation come in, become enacted.
And then staff recommends the city commission hold a public hearing on ordinance number 29-2025, and provide any changes or direction to staff for second reading. Thank you.
And I will also add that you all should have updated copies of the ordinance that includes the recommendations by the Planning and Zoning Board. So if you all choose to adopt those recommendations, as provided, they're highlighted in yellow, you all could move forward with those, or choose to move forward with any other adjustments that you would like.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Howington, Vice Mayor Harriet, and Commissioner Caldwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. Thank you for putting it together so quickly. I think you guys did great with that. One thing that I didn't hear mentioned, that I heard mentioned in our previous meeting, was that if 180 does go into place and becomes law July 1st, that we have a 14-day, basically like a cooling-off period if somebody does bring a lawsuit against us to make a determination. Is, has that changed?
So the way it works, it's, it's the same as we discussed last time. The way it works is a resident or business owner, if they notify us that it's a violation of, of Senate Bill 180, we would then have 14 days from the date of their notification to withdraw our action. In this case, it would be a moratorium. But it, it can be to withdraw any of the actions, comprehensive plan amendments, land development regulations, but in this case, the moratorium. We also would need to do a notice of intent to repeal, and, and then we would need to repeal within the 14 days. So that's still in place. We can pass this ordinance, and if a resident or business owner does provide that notice, we would have the opportunity to invalidate, and then they would not be able to get attorney's fees.
So if we have that option in place, then having the automatic sunset of this based on 180 passing on July 1st would almost be negated, because we do have some protection built into the legislation, correct? For us to act within a timely manner.
That's a decision you all would need to make. You would need to take affirmative steps, and so we would need to schedule a special meeting, bring the item, and you all would need to vote. So I, it does give an out, a, a good out, but that, it's, it would require affirmative action, and relatively quick affirmative action.
Right. As far as acreage density for infill lots, what was the, what was the final decision on that? Because I thought that it was one home per acre, so the lower the density, the projects would not be impacted. Did that get picked up, or how did that?
So as currently drafted, there is, that is not defined, so you all can define that tonight, if you wanted to find the infill as being that one unit per acre density, or if you'd like to define it by a minimum lot size, or both, those are all options available to you tonight.
Okay, and as far as infill, I'm, I'm gonna leave that up to, you know, I'd like to hear other people's input. But I did not have an intent to change the motion for mixed use at this time, but I'll reserve that to hear what everybody has to say. That's all I have for right this moment, but I may come back with additional questions if I'm gonna amend the motion.
Vice Mayor Harriet, Commissioner Caldwell, then Commissioner Lully.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask the motioner which copy of the ordinance was intended to be motioned, the original copy or the copy that was recommended by, by P&amp;Z?
The amended.
Sorry.
The amended. As, as we're seeing, yeah, now taking into account, yes. With the exception of, I do not intend to include the 180 sunset, as I just stated, so that would be removed.
So I, I, I don't, let me start with the "I do's." So this commission has worked diligently over the last few months to address a lot of the concerns that have been brought to us by residents and observed by ourselves. I think we've done a phenomenal job doing that. In fact, we were actively working on stormwater updates to the land development code. We, we've changed a lot of the land development code with stricter requirements. To me, this feels very rushed. I don't know that, I would prefer a much more measured approach that didn't negatively impact some of our residents that are here in this room today. I feel like it's being rushed for a specific reason, and I'm not gonna restate that reason, but I think that that's, I don't think that that's appropriate. I don't think that that moves the city in the, the forward direction. We saw flooding in 2022, Hurricane Ian, that impacted 180-ish, possibly more homes. We don't, as far as I understand, we, the city doesn't have a complete number on it, but it's possibly more than 180, with no significant stormwater changes between '22 and 2024 with Hurricane Milton. With, and Hurricane Milton, that number was reduced to the teens. I understand that a lot of the flooding that was, that did exist in Milton was related to bad development. The, the city is, is actively pursuing remedies for, with those developers. We've taken action on a couple of the other, the ones that we're able to take action on. I think that this is, this is not a, a measured approach. This does not fit the best interest of the city. I think we've already taken a lot of steps. There's, the reality of it also is, we've got this residential project list in front of us, and impact fees are paid at the point that building permits are pulled. And the reality is that we don't have a lot of developments that are at the point where permits for vertical construction will be pulled. And I'm not sure that it's reasonable, or it's, the risk is there to, for the developers to get to that point. So we're, we're protecting this, the city against something that I don't think is that great of a risk at this moment. I do want to explicitly highlight how important these mitigation measures are for stormwater, for flooding. We're, we've got the zoning in progress for the stormwater chapter of the land development code. You know, we're making a lot of strides. Public Works presented a bunch of projects that are being currently worked on for stormwater-related, you know, stormwater-related projects. So I, I just think that this is, this isn't a, a measured way to proceed, and it, it puts us at an increasingly risky position that I don't know that we need to take at this point.
Point of order, can I make a motion to extend the meeting?
We would have to retract your current motion, because there's a motion on the floor, correct? Is that the way, Joyce? Yeah, there's a motion on the floor. You just retract your motion, you can make it again afterwards.
Okay. I'll retract the motion, and I'm making a motion to extend the meeting for an additional hour. Hopefully, we don't go that long.
Yeah, I don't...
That's not the intent, but...
You know, can I speak, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So last meeting, we spent three hours on this same topic, three hours. Today, we should have known already what we spoke about... Today, we should have known already what we spoke about and what we were going to vote. This should have been very simple. We knew what we were going to vote on. P&amp;Z didn't even take half an hour to make a decision.
That's right.
They went through the whole thing within half an hour. Boom bam, they voted. So now we're going back again to telling the stories from the beginning to the end. You know, I have to go home. I have a sick mom at home. So, you know, let's get this over and done with. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez, would you prefer 30 minutes?
I prefer to make a motion and get this over and done with. Let's make a motion. We already know what we want. Let's just make the motion.
Okay. Then I'll make the motion, and.
So let's, if it's okay with the commission, let's listen to public comment, and then we can just vote.
Well, I'd still like to make a motion to extend it for 30 minutes, just to make sure that we don't have any legal issues.
Sir, a second? Could you please use your mic?
Second it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Howington to extend the meeting 30 minutes. There's a second by Commissioner Caldwell. Can we please do, just do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Till 10:32. Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Howington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lully?
Yes.
Commissioner Santiago?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
No.
Mayor Vila?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to, let's see, where did that motion go?
Guys, let's not make this a mockery. Let's do it the right way. Go ahead.
I hereby move to approve ordinance number 29-2025 at first reading from the one proposed by Planning and Zoning with the removal of the sunset at 100, if Senate Bill 180 passes. So remove that. Keep infill lots and mixed use. So yes, that's, so just remove the Senate Bill 180 piece.
Commissioner, there's a motion by Commissioner Howington. Is there a second?
I'll second for.
Second by Commissioner Caldwell. Thank you for using your mic. Can we please go to a public comment? And I know that other commissioners want to speak, so let's listen to public comment, and then I'm going to have to shorten your guys' speeches. I'm sorry. But I, everybody here, we got to respect everybody's time. So public comment, please.
Larry French?
Larry French, 2520 Arslan Street. I've been a resident here for many years, and I've spoken and written and posted for many years about this topic, or the need for this topic, because the root cause of it is the way we do our development. Regardless of whatever you decide, or whether we have a moratorium or not, we've got to fix the flaws that our development process has. Staff has mentioned about how they're working on making changes, and those changes to some of the code that we have that's flawed. It's going to take three to six weeks or more to get some of those things done. And your Exhibit A clearly shows you hundreds and hundreds of homes that are already in the process, that are not going to be corrected in any way in the practices that are used for clearing land, destroying habitat, causing elevation changes that could create flooding. So regardless of what you do, what we've got to do in our planning and zoning, in our comp plan, and in our land development code, is we've got to utilize proven ecological design development practices. Instead of letting the plan for the development dictate how the land is used, you need to let the land dictate how the plan is put together for the design. Instead of clear-cutting and wiping away everything that's already there, those things need to be kept into consideration, because for decades, eons, they have regulated our water, our water quality, our wildlife, and created the environment that brought many of us here. So we've got to use what we know that's been done and utilized in other communities, and put these things into practice. We've got to stop letting them clear-cut. We've got to start using materials that are ecological.
Thank you. Tim Blajic?
Good evening, Tim Blajic, Deltona. Well, not much time, so let me get into this. I was kind of hoping to hear something about how to protect the people who are moving into these areas. I heard the term flood protection zone. That would be great. Some way to percolate the ground, find out that they're not living in a flood zone. We could probably figure something like that out if we had the answers from the Teresa Basin study. But instead, what we got here on page 5, 6, and 7, they talk about infill residential development. I suppose those are people who find a plot of land, put a house on it. That's great. They're not going to do much damage. But then we get into mixed-use development, in other words, MPUDs, the scourge of Deltona, the things that go on forever, ruining the ground and causing floods to your neighbors and yourself. So we're going to protect those. And we're going to protect all the ones that have already been improved, as they just mentioned in Exhibit A. And we're going to protect anybody who gets them approved up until a week from now. Gee, I sure am glad the developers have been protected with this ordinance. This ordinance is basically what I call a Hollywood ordinance. It's lights, camera, and no action. Congratulations.
Elizabeth Chavez?
I say yes to the moratorium. I say yes to a moratorium, because I think it does give some time for some upgraded things that they were saying in the great presentation that the gentleman gave. And I think that it also gives us some safety in our city to look at the infrastructure. I really hate to hear that at the 4:30 PM meeting, that it is acknowledged that developers are coming in and doing the stormwater however way they fit, and it's causing issues. This is a safety issue for Deltona. And I remember going to four meetings, three out of the four, where everybody was concerned about safety, not just crossing a road, and there not being no ADA there, and somebody getting hit and dying. I'm talking about other safeties. These are infrastructures. These are roads. These are, like he was saying, the safety measures for traffic. You know, it used to take me 15 minutes to get to Delan, and now it takes me 34, from Deltona to Delan. And that's just from my house off of Normandy, trying to get to Kentucky or whatever, where I have to go on to 4115. It could take me 20 minutes. And then we're talking about not doing a moratorium. I understand you're doing a motion. I really hope that you guys say yes to this moratorium.
Robin French?
Robin French, 2520 Arslan Street, Deltona. I've been a resident here in Deltona for 43 years. Temporary loss of use. What about permanent loss of use? Because that's what my property is. Impact fees. What about the impact to current residents? We've lost the ability to grow our food. I've lost my garden, all my fruit trees. We can only utilize half of our property. Luckily, my house was undamaged, but that's because my husband's smart and knows how to build it. Our property is underwater. We lived on a seasonal pond that has turned into a raging mud hole. Yes, it's receded somewhat. And what is left resembles a moonscape, not the park that it was prior to Ian. You were originally pumping off of El Cam to keep it clear into our lake. This last time around, we were told they weren't, but I could see pump stations. So I'm sorry. I know how it works. Lake Tiny to Lake Angela to Lake Elizabeth. 34 years of work and love destroyed for blind greed. And that's all I can see, is blind greed, not only with the developers, but with our city, past commissions, and managers who have allowed it. Flood-planted acreage next to me, I stopped counting after 50 loads of filter. They plopped their house right on top of mine, and I'm still flooded, four years after Ian. Now is the time to change. We can't wait any longer.
Teri Ellis? Diane Anthony?
All right. I realize the moratorium is not perfect, but at this point, it's all we've got, and it's better than nothing. I do, I have watched for years in not only Deltona, but other central Florida cities, where the developers come in, and they're not asking to just make a profit. They're a mask, they constantly ask to rezone to small, small lots and zero lot lines, to make as much profit as possible. Because I saw in those slides, saying, preventing them from making a profit. No, they're making a huge profit at our expense. And the zoning does, rules do need to be changed. And if this continues, and everyone, and I even saw a video of a commissioner recently saying a moratorium would be devastating to Deltona, because we could get sued. Well, at what point do residents of Deltona start getting the right to sue the city, because their properties are ruined due to the decisions of the zoning and in favor of the developers? And I think everyone here knows what the residents of Deltona want, and constantly going, what about the tax dollars that development will bring in, is not making up for the destruction. Quality of life makes a huge difference. And when they say this is what the people voted for, it is not. Nobody campaigns in this city going, I'm campaigning on the fact that I'm going to rezone all larger lots to lots as small as possible, and approve every single development and subdivision that comes along, because they know they would not get voted in if they said that. I really encourage you to please change the trajectory of Deltona and.
Thank you. Kathy Bryan?
I have mixed feelings about this, just because of the way the state's been working lately. And I say, for everybody who wants this moratorium and does not appreciate what's happening, move it up from just the city, go to the state, because unfortunately, we're bound by the state laws. But to do a moratorium or to not, we really do need to take a pause to work on ways for smarter development that benefits the entire city and not just the developer. Again, I've said this before, I've heard other people say it tonight, you do not have to rezone to increased density. I say it's buyer beware. You bought the property under a zone. It's a gamble. And they're used to winning, so they don't like it when they lose. Well, we have every right to not rezone. Is it more expensive to fix all the problems that we have, I think like the lady, last lady was just kind of saying, versus the lawsuits? I mean, why, why does this person have property rights, but I don't? I'm going to start burning on my yard and blowing the smoke on all my neighbors and see how far that gets me, right? The pressure of development is not only putting pressure on the roads and traffic, but the schools, too. I don't give a crap what the school board says. They're full of it. Our schools are overcrowded. Infill lots, I agree, it's not a big deal. But the MPUDs, honestly, there's so much density in those things, and so much worse on our infrastructure. So if you go ahead with the moratorium, you better have a good plan in place, so it doesn't fall off the map again. Thanks.
David Sousa?
First of all, I'm going to say I'm in support of the moratorium, barring, we exclude commercial, which you did, and infill lots. I know on the infill lots, you say you could get an exemption or a waiver, but also in your language, it said it would cost the resident $1,500, and then it would have to be voted on. That's nonsense. Infill lots need to be taken out. Now, what we do need to do is address basically public safety and flooding, two main issues right here. And I think the moratorium should give you enough time to do that. Now, like I said before, there was a moratorium placed before for nine months that should have had some work on, that our folks over here should be reviewing already, or since day one, when they got hired, and have made changes to them. Now, I know, Emma, you talked about, we don't want to do a moratorium, because we're afraid of ticking off the state, and we might not get $3 million, which we might not get anyways, in case the government vetoes it like he has in the past. That's chump change. It's table scraps. You got $950 million sitting in transformed 386, or whatever it is. Your husband's in charge of that. I've asked a couple of the county council members, why isn't Deltona getting their money? He says, you guys have given them nothing. So it's not their fault you're not getting money. It's your fault for not providing them opportunity to do things. As far as class action lawsuits, if 180 passes, who cares? Sue the state. You're going to have people like Orange County, who has rural boundaries that might be impacted. You have Alseola County. You have other municipalities that currently have moratoriums. Do a class action lawsuit against the state. And just to get to the mixed use, if the mixed use in here, if I'm reading it correctly, it says it must be 70% commercial, 30% residential? Is that how I'm reading that in this packet? If so, I'm okay with that. If not, then I oppose it.
All right. In the interest of time, we're going to go through the ones that are here to speak one more time. Commissioner Caldwell, then Commissioner Lully, then Commissioner Santiago.
Yeah, I just want to state that I don't think the intent of this motion is to do anything other than have a chance to address our impact fees and our stormwater issues. With that being said, could I get a quick overview of the timeframe needed to change our impact fees?
Certainly. So there is, out on the street right now, an RFP to select a company that would conduct the impact fee study, which is a special purpose study that has to use current data and be conducted specifically for the purpose of impact fees. So we could not use, for instance, the Teresa Basin study. Some of that data may be helpful to the firm conducting the impact fee study, but that study alone would not provide the basis for impact fees. A typical timeline, depending obviously on the data available and the complexity of the calculations needed to be done by the selected firm, could range anywhere from three to six months in conducting their study. This is, of course, ballpark, whatever firm is selected would have, you know, an agreed-upon timeline and their own metrics. By statute, there has to be a 90-day phase-in of an impact fee. So from the date that the gavel hits on second reading, and the impact fee ordinance is adopted, there must be a 90-day phase-in period before the new impact fee schedule becomes active. That is, so there's some public notice requirements that have to occur within those 90 days, but that is a statutorily prescribed timeline.
So we're probably looking at close to nine months to a year for the process.
I would say that's accurate.
My second question is, infill lots, is there any way to handle the commercial builders? My second question is, infill lots, is there any way to handle the commercial builders as opposed to the private residents?
So I would caution you on distinguishing between ownership types by providing for an exemption from the application of the moratorium. Essentially, the commission is stating that this type of development does not provide the same impacts as the other residential developments. So by distinguishing by ownership type, that argument doesn't quite track, because you're distinguishing this by development type, not by ownership type.
Understand. One last question to the, the motion maker. Would you consider removing the mixed use development from this motion?
Yes. I would remove the mixed use, yes.
Did the person that made the second agree with that motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Lilly?
In the sake of time, I'll make this quick. I think at the second reading, I'll have more to say on the infill, but I wanted to flag for the family in the audience tonight that as presented tonight, this motion would not affect your plans to construct a home on your residential estate one parcel on Prescott Boulevard. Thank you.
Just, just for clarification, is there a lot more than an acre, an acre or more?
Yes. In residential estate one, it would be one, minimum one unit per acre.
Okay. Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Really quick on, for the attorneys, how much would it cost the city of Deltona residents when we sue the state?
So if, if we sue the state, and this is ballpark, very rough, and we, we spoke with two of the firms that have done work for the city before, litigation for the city before, ballpark is 200 to 600,000. It's their opinion that the case, presumably, we would end up joining with other governments, so hopefully some of that cost could be shared. However, that's not a given. They also, their opinion is that you don't have to do that, by the way, but, but you can, you can elect to do that. Their opinion is that even if we prevail, they'll, it'll be appealed, and that the Supreme Court would take it up. So it will, it will go all the way, which could push us up to the higher end of the cost. And again, we may, we may want to team up with other people, but other governments might not be perfectly aligned with us, so we would have to make sure we found the right partner who had our same interests and our same track.
Thank you very much. Just really quick, do, I agree with the vice mayor how this is not in the best interest of the city. We're doing lots of things right now that are moving forward, especially with the impact fee studies. So I just wanted to make those little quick notes before, I know it's almost time. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I thought P&amp;Z had three great compromises. I was going to vote for it, with the compromises P&amp;Z did. Mixed use, infill lots out, and the third point of SB 180. We just removed two of the compromises. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, you know, do it this way, that's, that's great. So let's vote. I'm not going to support this by removing the provisions that P&amp;Z recommended, so can we please vote? Motion passes four to three. Is there any city manager comments?
No. I mentioned.
Sorry, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mentioned actually a request to pull that item from the agenda. 30 years, I've been putting festivals on in five different communities. I've heard the feedback here in Deltona. I've taken under advisement, and we'll change the policy to allow political vendors at the festival, so no need to follow through on that item.
Do we need to make a motion to pull it from the agenda?
He's ceding to it, so there's no motion.
Yep.
Okay, just want that on record so that nobody comes back and says we didn't do something.
Bob stayed all night for that.
City, city manager, any comments?
Not at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Meeting adjourned.